Okay, good evening everyone. I hope I am audible, anyone can confirm, probably you can write down in chat, anyone just to give me a signal that we can start this. Okay, perfect. Uh so today, as you are aware that this examination of IBS is something that we practically do all the case studies and everything on every Friday. So today we are also presenting a case study which is more or less in terms of the companies act uh for related to some director, directors and uh kind of uh act and all and then simultaneously we will be discussing about some accounting standard issues and then probability auditing is also something that will be taking care. So I hope this case study which is there is already was shared by the respective coordinators and you all have gone through that particular case study. Before I move to the case study, I will like to introduce myself. I am known as Amit Rathor, chartered accountant by qualification. And I have around fifteen years of experience, out of which four years of experiences with Deloitte, three years with Anstel Young, six years of experience with KPMG. And right now I am part of Fobis Mazar's group. So since day one till today, all these fifteen years they have been spent in auditing only. So I am a statutory auditor by profession. And I am generally, you can say that the area for me is basically creating of delivery centers for the audit as a practice and then leveraging those delivery centers for domestic and onshore clients. So overseas and on domestic both clients are being handled. So while I was going through the case study to select, I I thought probably this Rahul and Raj Films Limited is something that may be an area of interest for all of you. And while we will be going through, I have uh an ID which is marked with one. So that ID is something that you guys can use for dropping your questions in case you have any questions. And I even though uh I was expecting that you must have gone through the case studies directly we can discuss. But I will still take some time to go through the case study for the benefit of the people who might not got any time to spend on this particular case study because of their busy. So as you can see, my screen is shared and I hope it is visible to everyone. Please confirm someone maybe from the team of the coordinator so that I can proceed further. Anyone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. So we are talking about a case study which is related to films kind of an industry which is production, distribution and media exhumations, so including the OTT platforms etcetera, which is a kind of an area of interest for all these companies. Nowadays, with the OTT coming in in place, you can understand that this can be considered as a direct threat to the film industry as well. So these film industries, the companies in the film industries, they know that this can be either an opportunity or this can be a threat as well. So instead of considering these kind of changes whereby the user experience is more aligned to the customization of the of the media, so people are now are media which is customized for their interest and that's why the OTT kind of a platform is increasing. So we are definitely going to discuss that how this can be considered as an opportunity for any company in the industry as well. Not gone through as I didn't know, okay, no worries. So we will be going through with this Rahul and Raj Films Limited. So the journey when you are talking about the journey of the Rahul and Raj Films Limited, R and R. So R and R is something that this case study will be known for the rest of the slot that we will be discussing. It began in nineteen ninety-five, weaving captivating tales that unfolded on small screen following followed by hitting the big screen in two thousand one. So they started their operations in nineteen ninety-five, but later on they got their biggest hit, the biggest screen hit in two thousand one. At the helm of this creative enterprises, so there are three promoters, three founders which are part of this company and they are Mr. Shah Ratan Kumar, Miss Sani Kapoor and Miss Nutan Dubey. So while I am explaining this particular case study, I would definitely like if you can pay hundred percent of your attention because when we will start discussions, every minute of the detail which is there in this particular case study may change the perception, may change the outcome. So we need to be there throughout with hundred percent focus while the case study is being discussed. And I will definitely recommend to the to the students because in in CA final, these kind of IBS case studies will be there and you will realize that these case studies are very lengthy in terms of the data that they will be capturing. So while you will be working on that data, you will be trying to solve all the questions related to this case study. It is highly recommended that you can make notes and then after making those notes, you can definitely uh move to the question section, question and answer section, right? So this is the same thing we are also going to do. So I have already for the interest, for the uh benefit of interest, I have already made some notes, but I am really sorry for my writing. So if you want me to make those notes again along with while going this particular case study, I can do that as well. But uh since to to benefit out of the time, I would definitely like to start with the notes that I have already created. Okay, so I hope my screen is visible. And you see Rahul and Raj Films Limited, when it comes, they begin their operation in nineteen ninety-five, small screen. And then in two thousand one, they they got their first hit on a big screen. These are the promoters or the founders, so Mr. Shah Ratan Kumar is there, Miss Rani Kapoor is there and Miss Nutan Dubey is there. Then we have in the case study, a kind of a milestone that what are the achievements that the company had since inception. So in nineteen fifty ninety-five, the company started its operations while in two thousand one, they got the major breakthrough which was mentioned as the first hit for their media house. Then in two thousand fifteen, by the time the two thousand fifteen came, they became a leader in this particular industry. And by two thousand twenty-four, considering the customization or the change in the behavior or the interest of the customers, they came up with their streaming platform as well, which is an OTT. So the company has established strong board of directors comprising seasonal seasoned professionals from diverse background who bring their expertise and guidance to steer the company towards sustainable growth. The board exercises prudent oversight, ensuring strategical alignment, risk management and adherence to corporate governance standards. The board of directors and senior management details are given as per the next chapter A. So when we will move to the next chapter A, we will definitely see that who is the non-executive chairman, who is the managing director, who is the kind of joint managing director in this particular company, who who are independent directors, who is the company secretary and I mean CFO etcetera, so that detail, all of the detail is already mentioned in a next chapter A. Moving ahead, India's film industry, so this is basically the industry background that when it comes to the film industry, how we are placed when it comes to India. So the India's film industry is one of the largest with two thousand motion picture films released per year and they are viewed, the audience size is basically three billion moviegoers annually. It is actually two sixty billion industry and is expected to grow to six hundred billion rupees by two thousand forty. Okay, so the growth potential is there in this company, so that is also we need to note. While we will be discussing the case studies, maybe all the facts that we are taking care of right now while going through the case study which will not be relevant or required while doing the question and answer session, but still it is advisable, it is recommended to know the business, the industry, the background of industry, the company's background, their organizational structure, all this is part of audits planning when it comes to planning. Okay, so I hope you are already aware about various steps that we are going to generally take care when we talk about audit as an assignment. So the audit as an assignment starts with client acceptance basically, which is more or less like issuing the engagement letter, having the management discussions, identification of the risks or probably independence check etcetera, so that is the first step. The second step is whereby we are doing planning. In the planning, the first step is generally about having the industrial background checked. We also do KMP check, but we generally would like to cover that step when we are doing the acceptance and continuation procedures. So while checking about the industry background, we will definitely see whether this industry is a high-risk industry or whether this industry is a low-risk industry. So before we move to the engagement, that is the client in that industry, the company in the industry, we have to decide industry level risk as well because at times your organization may decide that there are a couple of industries which may be higher risk in nature, the audit will not be accepted for that industry. So that's also something we can decide at a firm level, okay? Now moving to to the entity level basically, so understanding the industry and then second step will be to understanding the company itself. When we are talking about the industry, you can see the potential is high, two sixty billion is the current industry value and then this is expected to grow by six hundred billions. After completing the planning stage, the next step that we generally take in the audit is known as controls, right? So risk assessment process which can have the identification of the controls and doing the testing, designing, implementation and their test of effectiveness. This step actually helps us in identifying whether we are going to rely on the clients, on the controls or not. So if in case we will be deciding that we are going to place the reliance on the controls, our substantive testing will reduce to some extent, which will be the next step, okay? And if in case it's just vice versa, if in case we are not relying on the controls, the extent of substantive testing will increase further. That's what we do at the third stage. In the planning stage itself, we do preliminary analytical reviews, procedures, we identify the materiality, we identify the performance materiality, we identify the CTT, everything, I mean all this is covered under the planning state state itself. Then we move to the substantive testing, depending upon what will be the nature, timing and extent, depending upon whether we are going to rely on the controls or not. So that is very practical, if in case we are going to rely on the controls, then the substantive testing will reduce to some extent. But if we are not relying, then the extent of the substantive testing will increase, okay? So coming back to the understanding of the industry, which is the industry enjoys mass appeal and is probably the most important content feeder to other businesses in the media and entertainment space. So this is one of the leader which we discussed above as well, that by the time two thousand fifteen came in, they become at a leadership position, so they become the lead, one of the leader in the industry itself. Opportunity in the industry lies in meeting the demands of the new age consumer who seek customized content tailored to their preferences. So all these media houses, they might consider this change in the customer behavior as a threat as well or as an opportunity as well. It depends upon the strategic planning of the company. For this company, this can be the shifting in the consumer behavior towards favorable this customized content tailored, which is maybe an OTT platform and all, they are considering that this is going to be another opportunity in the market. This shift in consumer behavior presents a favorable environment for the company to thrive and capitalize on emerging opportunities. The industry is witnessing the following mega trends. So now we will be discussing that in industry at an industry level, what are the changes that are planned or what are the changes the industry is going through before moving to the company? So when we are discussing about the integrated business solutions, so this is an example. Number, there are three trends, major trends which are being identified by during this case study for the media industry. The first trend is basically witnessing the adoption of emerging technologies to offer immersive viewing experience. So the use of technology is increasing day in, day out. You all are aware that VR or probably your AR, they are the top of the town, you know like including AI, ML etcetera. So this is this is top of the town, you can understand how when a stage of probably before the release, the production is happening, how they are recording the videos and then in including this VR and AR in the in the movie, the recorded movie before they will plan for release of this. So there is high dependency on the VRs and augmented reality. If I talk about the difference, because these are two different words which are written here. When we are talking about virtual reality, it means that the whole of the atmosphere, the the kind of you know the environment is getting changed using the technology itself. So let us suppose if you are, if you are wearing a VR glass and you are, let us suppose you are just enjoying a role of a right while sitting on a chair. It means all that experience that is there or you are playing a cricket or game or probably a tennis as a game. So when you are wearing those VRs, you actually feel like you are inside that game. And all the surroundings of of yours is actually changed by the VR methodology, VR system. So that's the IT which is known as virtual reality. And simultaneously we have augmented reality as well, which is being used in different scenarios while um publishing or while recording the book is etcetera. So when it comes to augmented reality, this is more or less like uh using the IT to enhance the user experience but not changing the the surrounding. So that's known as augmented reality. The examples for you like playing a game where the reality will remain as it is, but but using the game, there are some additions which you can can relate to. Like if you have ever played a game which is known as Pokemon Go, so the locality will remain same, the maps are remaining same, but suddenly you will realize a Pokemon is coming on the road from somewhere. So they are just adding the adding adding the attributes to your findings. Or probably if you have ever tried to uh purchase a TV, let us suppose for your room and then you are taking the camera to a particular room and then your room is visible in the camera and it is showing that if you will purchase this TV, how big this TV will be in your room. So that is also which is equally important. Uh okay, I think I have lost the video. Just give me a minute, I am again sharing the screen. Okay, so that is known as augmented reality. Or if you have ever tried to purchase, let us suppose uh uh specs using probably this technology whereby those specs are visible on your face and then you can see whether how this particular look will be, if you will be wearing those specs, how you will look alike. So that is known as augmented reality. The second mega trend which is there with the rise of the digitalized communities, brands and platforms are actively incorporating features like go live. So you you can very well see like the India-Australia match is going on. So that go live feature is there. So if you will go to uh maybe Zeus Hotstar, you will find that the go live feature is there. So that's also a mega trend with the industries witnessing. The mega trend which is the third one is the globalization of the media and entertainment services presented new opportunities for content creator, distributors and advertisers. So earlier when it came to the media entertainment, media music and movies are the primary source of entertainment for the customers. But now with all these opportunities which are there with the globalization of media and entertainment services, people are going to making YouTube videos, like TikTok videos and so on Instagram etcetera. So that all is covered over here and they they are in direct competition with the movie or this kind of a culture that this kind of an industry. So when they know that there are mega trends which are happening, what are the key strategies which are there for expanding the horizon for this particular enterprise, for this particular company? So R and R remains committed to producing engaging content, leveraging experience and expertise and expanding customer base. The focus on quality, adaptability and innovation continues to drive success in the dynamic world of entertainment. So movie making broadly, it has four steps which are visible. The first step is known as ideation, which may cover all these steps like budget study. So you will have to come up with a budget, you have to do Reiki. So you have to go to various locations to see what are the location that you will be using while doing the shooting of the movie, script scouting, so you will be overall presenting a picture of the script that will be there. The second step is basically pre-production, so ideation and then pre-production. In the pre-production, you will be finalizing your artists, you will be setting all the, you know, construction and all. And then script writing is also something that will be covered in the pre-production phase. After the pre-production phase, you will start the production of the movies and then the last stage is release. So in the production, you will be shooting the movie, visual effects which is VR, AR, you will put them over there and dubbing to clear the voice which was there when you recorded the movie. And then finally the marketing for release. So these are the, they will that are generally incurred when you come across a company inside the media industry, okay? So ideation is the first stage, the second is the pre-production, the third is the production and release is the fourth one. Now, until the production will start, we will not have any visibility on the future economic benefits. That's also very important. So you might have done a script scouting or Reiki of a location and you must have written some script writing or maybe the audition of the artist has happened. So you must have incurred some losses, some expenses, I will say not losses on these particular stages, but the point is until on this, the production is not start, we cannot say that this movie will be completed or will have some kind of future economic benefits. So all these expenditures that will be there, they are going to be revenue in nature for us. The key business strategies of R and R. So what are the key strategies that R and R will be taking care? So they will be expanding into the non-fictional kind of care. The company also enhances its focus towards non-fiction content and successfully launched log in. So this was a movie which was launched launched in the current year and this emerged as the highest watched movie. Showcasing the extensive reach of its business. This success encourages to continue emphasizing emphasizing transforming passive audiences into engaged prospects by striving to bring more out of the box content-led movies. So how are they strategizing that there are various stages, okay? But what is the company's strategy basically? So they will be expanding into the non-fiction kind of a area, a segment. The second is basically they are focusing more on the quality rather than coming up with a lot of quantity of the movies etcetera. So that is the second one. And then the third one is enhancing the user experience, which is more or less while the emphasis remains on connecting with more people in better way, the company also stayed aligned with the need of the time to adapt to the surrounding changes. So technological upgradesions has become an integral part. Our business of the company continue to cater to the entertainment needs of audiences through digital platforms. There is an annex B whereby some customer feedbacks are mentioned that what was their experience when they went to watch the movies produced by the company, okay? So these these are basically some strategic decisions that they are taking, which is expanding into the non-fiction, quality over quantity and then simultaneously enhancing the user experience. There are new projects as well, so there there is a movie which they have kind of they are working which is known as Simran. So the movie Simran is currently being conceptualized, okay? This is a very important kind of a word because this movie has not moved to production, okay? This is just a concept. Where the primary focus is on gathering detailed information and developing a solid foundation for the storyline. The project aims to explore the theme of women empowerment. So the theme for this movie is women empowerment. The objective at this stage is to ensure the story of the story is grounded in accurate, relevant and engaging content. This includes examining, so this is the, they are just showing you that what is the background, that how much efforts they need to make before they will decide on a movie to be created. So this includes examining historical contexts, cultural elements, scientific data or other element feels to enhance the authenticity authenticity and depth of the narrative. You might have seen, I mean, in some of the cases, people create movies, they build them and then after release you realize that the the content of the movie or the cultural elements which are being addressed, they are not adequate, they are not, they are not appropriate being, right? So there is a lot that goes in the background before they will decide that what will be the uh kind of content, final content of the movie. Creating a detailed plot outline, collaboration with subject matter experts, right? So at times they they hire religious gurus as well, they take their opinion on the content that they will be publishing because this can uh actually come or create some kind of outrage in the economy. And you must have seen with multiple movies how the audience has reacted. If the content was not or it get it ended up impacting any religious or political beliefs of of a particular segment of the society. So the company decided to abandon the movie Kalin Bhaya. Okay, I know you guys can relate to Kalin Bhaya, but this was a project of the company but they finally came up of the decision that they will abandon the Kalin Bhaya movie. The decision to abandon the movie project was finally due to the story not meeting the desired standards. So be very, very careful that there was a story that was not meeting the desired standards. It means the production of the movie was not started, okay? Despite multiple revisions and considerable efforts from the writing team, the narrative failed to captivate and engage in the way that was envisioned. The lack of a compelling and cohesive storyline made it difficult to move forward with the production. The team agreed that it would be best to discontinue the project rather than invest further resources into a script that did not meet the creative expectations. So this was kind of an internal company's decision that Kalin Bhaya is not meeting the content, captivating content is not good enough, so they have finally decided that they will not go ahead with the production of the movie and then they will finally discarding this concept itself. Music rights and revenue growth. When it comes to the media companies, we need to notice that it's not only the revenue from the uh movies that is part of their, the whole venue in the P and L. They also have other sources of revenue. One of the very prime or I will say, one of the main sources of revenue for these kind of companies is music rights and revenue growth. So music right is something that they also sell. They are selling music rights at the production stage itself before they are moving to the religious state. Because when they are releasing the music of the movie has to be released first because music creates a good vibe. I mean, at times you must have realized that uh before the movie has come in the market, the movie is considered to be a hit because of the songs, because of the music that is there. So companies, these companies, they at times end up earning more revenue in consideration to the cost of the production from the music rights sale only. So in that case, movie movie before getting released is considered to be a hit. In India, music is an important feature of motion pictures film. Music rights are generally sold to music companies during the production stage itself, that's what I exactly mentioned. As music plays an important role in marketing of a motion picture film, music companies release the soundtrack prior to the theoretical release. So before they will release it in the theater, they will release the music. These rights are generally assigned to the music company in perpetuity for a fixed fees where the producer has arrived to future realities royalties after achievement of threshold sales by the music company. So what happens? They sell all the music right of a particular company's mu- uh movies, music and wait for a fixed fees basically, when that fixed fees is aligned to a certain amount of sales. If they will be able to cross the sale of that amount, then the remaining amount, the excess which will be there, the uh media company can still keep on getting the royalty over it. Okay, and the royalty is booked as a revenue when it is confirmed by the music company to whom the rights have been sold, okay? I hope it's not only the case study, but you guys are getting to kind of learn a lot about the media companies, about the steps that they are taking, about the nature of business, the revenue sources. I mean, it's it's a kind of itself a very good case study which can give you one of the uh one of the prime segment of revenue for the India uh uh which comes from the media content and all. So so this will definitely give you the stages, the strategies, the challenges they are facing, how these challenges are being converted into opportunities. And I personally love this particular case study. On first September twenty-four, so we are doing the audit, so we are the auditors for the year twenty-four, twenty-five. So they are giving some additional information that on first September two thousand twenty-four, the company grants music rights of its three upcoming movies to Gold. So Gold is a music company and the company has given music rights to this particular company which is known as Gold for three movies which will be upcoming. This new movie company has agreed to pay three thousand lakhs receivables on the date of contract signing. The contract condition stipulates that proportionate amount shall be refunded in case of non-release of music of any of the three movies. So what they are saying that even though it will be payable on the day of signing of the contract, but it will be a conditional revenue. So due to any XYZ reasons, if the company will not be able to release the movie, then the music, then the proportionate amount will be refunded. So let us suppose if they have, they have released two movies, the two movies revenue will be considered as the income for the company, but if they are not able to release one movie, then that will be considered uh as refundable amount. So the company cannot recognize this as a revenue because it's a conditional revenue. So the music rights are also three thousand lakhs were given for three movies. So one thousand lakhs, it's an assumption that we will take, that we have uh got this agreement for one thousand lakhs for each movie. The music rights are made available to the music company of the first film on first December. So the first movie was this music company, the rights were sold on first December, so deal was signed on first December for the first movie. The second movie was on first of January two thousand twenty-five and for the third film, it is first July twenty-five. So it is not under our, I mean, the financial year for which we are, we will be doing the audit. So it is in the year of twenty-five, twenty-six, it's not in the year of twenty-four, twenty-five, okay? During the financial year twenty-four, twenty-five, R and R continued to thrive across various mediums. They leaving captivating content that resonated with the audiences. So they are really doing good, this is the meaning of this particular mind. In twenty-four, twenty-five, they were actually able to achieve some significant growth. How much the growth was that the group reported seventy-six percent increase in the revenue to five ninety-three crores versus three hundred thirty-seven crores in the previous financial year. So it is seventy-six percent growth, which you can understand from a company perspective, this is a very rapid growth. The cost of production obviously, since the revenue from the movies has increased, so the cost of production should also increase somewhat in the parallel kind of a proportion. So we will see how this cost of production has increased. So it has increased to five hundred eleven crores in comparison to three hundred twenty-seven crores in the previous financial year. So if you can realize, I mean, uh so they they ended up scoring a gross profit of around probably eighty-two crores in this year in comparison to previous year which was only ten crores. In line with the increase in production hours, crossing the milestone of producing more than one thousand hours. Producing more than more than one thousand hours itself is a very big achievement, okay? Producing more than more than one thousand hours itself is a very big achievement, okay? Because if you will end up watching a movie which is two hours, two and half hours, I mean you can you can relate to this, they are. And they are working on like fifty sixteen movies simultaneously, they are able to record one thousand hours content during the physical year. Abita loss which was there nineteen crores, it is narrowed down by eighty four percent from the. Uh current financial year over loss of one twenty two crores in the previous financial year. So because of the growth that the company has seen, they were able to reduce the abita loss as well, which happened which were. Which was actually one twenty two crore in the previous year, but in the current year it is nineteen years. I mean, I'm I'm not showing you the notes, maybe after the case study, I will quickly show you the notes that I prepared out of this particular case study. But I'll again recommend to all of you to have this case study and the notes while you will be working in exam. Because these case studies are generally very lengthy and you can go off track or you can lose the con- content on track itself, right? So that's, okay, I'm taking note, thank you, Samanathan. Now the company has improved its account receivable collection, so while the loss is improved. They are saying the company has also improved its account receivable, which is basically, so and and last year it was one sixty four days of outstanding, so. One sixty four days of revenues outstanding, which is actually a huge amount, it's a it may be an area of concern for the client itself, I mean for the auditors itself. So one sixty four days of credit was there on average last year, which is slightly improved, so I will not say it is very improved, but. Four days of uh sales is that is what the company has is able to recover at the end of the year. Now we have the auditor's engagement and their concerns, so Ranveer and Ranveer LLP, that's basically a. LLP and statutory audit firm, so they are appointed as the auditors of the company since last four years. So they are continuously uh doing the audit of this company from last four years. Now, the firm's audit and assurance practice in different sectors including media and telecom. Is dedicated to delivering exceptional quality and innovative solutions with term of experienced professionals who offer in-depth. Industry expertise and insightful audits, ensuring that clients receive the highest level of assurance. The firm is an auditor to many of the country's most recognizable brands in the market. So when it comes to industry, media industry, this firm has many clients from the industry, media industry, so we can say that the firm has capability. And they have the required skill set to perform the audit of this particular in a company in the industry which is a kind of a leader, right? So this is one of the biggest company and R and R which is Ranveer and Ranveer has the capabilities to do the audit. Considering the continuation, continuing so forth, right? The engagement partner is deliberating whether a new engagement letter should be sent to the for the audit of current year or not. Till last year, an engagement letter was sent for the audit every financial year, despite no changes changes of the law and the revolution, auditors management responsibility, right? So they are saying from last four years, we are the auditor of this company and we are issuing the engagement letter for every year. But is it really required for this current year to issue the engagement letter? I mean irrespective of what law says, it is highly recommended that we should be doing it, right? But there can be an exception in the in the law whereby if there is no significant changes in the management or leadership of the company. We can still continue without an engagement letter, right? Saying this, especially in India, we have two term, five years each for auditors, so that's really important, so. There is a possibility that the company ended up appointing one auditor for a consecutive term of five years in one row. So that can also be a case, so we need to be very careful and we need to see, but yes, since this is a question which will you will subsequently face, but. Uh to answer, I mean, until unless there is no changes in the laws or regulations or the key managerial persons. Or responsibilities of the management, we can avoid uh issuing the engagement letter as well, but that's a kind of a theoretical concept, practically we generally issue the engagement letter. During the audit engagement, the auditor observed that the days outstanding are significantly higher, this is what we discussed, right? So one sixty days, it mean it means the half of the year's sale is outstanding at the balance sheet date. So it is an area of concern, so they are thinking that the auditors observe that the days outstanding are significantly higher than the industry averages. And decided to obtain independent balance of trade receivables. So they are thinking that we will take the independence, well independent balance confirmations, we are not going to rely on any confirmation. That the client may share with us, that they have some internal kind of a process whereby they take confirmations from the debtors. Every month or quarter or yearly, but we are not going to rely on that particular system because that will not be an independent confirmation. So the auditors are of an opinion that having such an outstanding of the sales which is receivables is an area of concern for us. And probably they will go with the direct or independent balance confirmations from the trade receivables. The confirmation letter requested, uh request the customer to respond directly to the auditor. Indicating whether the party agrees or disagrees with the information in the request or provide the requested information. So they are saying that the confirmation letter that we will be sending, the party has to respond by, by saying whether they agree it or they are not agreeing it. It means they are not going to send a confirmation letter whereby it is written that if they will not get any revert from the uh kind of account receivables. Then they will consider that this is confirmed, right? So that is known as a negative confirmation which is banked, so this is not, I mean practically feasible and this is not allowed by the law itself, right? So we should not be doing or going ahead with any negative kind of a confirmation. The confirmation letters request the customer to respond directly to the auditor indicating whether the party agrees or disagree. Now, based on the previous experience, so auditors have this experience, they know. Then last time as well, when they send independent confirmations, the auditor believed that the responses to the confirmation request would be insufficient. So when you will do audit, you will come across many such instances in companies where the. Uh the client or the account receivables are not confirming the balances. So if the auditor wants to take the comfort on the outstanding amount, they have to come up with some other procedures which are known as alternate procedures. You will find these kind of instances mainly in huge kind of quantity when you will do the audit of banks or NBFCs etcetera. Uh maybe housing finance as well, because they generally like especially for NBFCs or I will say microfinance companies, they generally. Distribute their loans uh to self-help group kind of, you know, like groups which don't have a lot of education around the balance confirmations or probably. Uh they are not feeling it comfortable to revert back to it, so at times in my experience when we send these confirmations. At times what happens, these borrowers, they go back to the branches and then they they talk to the branch manager that there is a letter which they have received. And this will breach the independence itself, the branch manager can get involved and can get their sign or probably. I don't know, the stamp or whatever it is, they can send it back to the auditor, so we need to be very careful from where the confirmation is being received. Is it from the customer, even if the uh indirect con- confirmations are received by the auditor, but. We have to see from where the reply has come, is it like from the uh branch or from the borrowers? That's an additional step that we need to do while we will be tracking the independence confirmations. So based on the previous experience, the auditor believed that the responses to the confirmation request would be insufficient, so they know about it, right? This is primarily, I have seen these kind of situations with the government uh as a customer as well. So if you come across any such situation whereby the products or services are rendered to government, they may have outstanding for a long period. And in those cases, this is uh we have to do some alternate procedures to see whether the transaction actually happened with the government or not, right? So that is also a kind of a key area, generally you don't get the confirmation from the government accounts as well, so that creates a very big problem. Based, uh okay, this is primarily due to the fact that the company works in an unorganized sector, that's what I was telling you, like. Microfinance companies, NBFCs, they generally work in an unorganized sector and then they. End up giving loans to the people who are not that organized in terms of education, qualification, etcetera. And every customer may not readily maintain, so that's also a challenge, that the customers may not have even idea. That what is the total outstanding that they have in their books on behalf of company at the balance sheet date or at the end of the financial year, right? So they might not have updated books and records, also also due to the lack of interest, customers may generally be reluctant in confirming balances. So also due to the lack of interest, that's also a very big area, I mean generally for customers, this is like an additional. Uh step, it's kind of a burden for them, they this procedure, this might give the comfort to the auditor about the balances for. Uh in the books of the company, but for the customers, it might not be at times, they are not comfortable with this. Especially when there is some kind of a dispute which is raised by the other customer, so they don't confirm, right? They generally stop from sending the reply to these confirmations because they think the dispute is there, so. That dispute should not be finalized by their balance confirmation and revert, yeah? Now we are discussing about the organizational structure of the company, so when it comes to the company, company has few subsidiaries. And which helps um in the market positioning for the uh for the movies they are building for the music rights. Or probably like at times for the movie exhibitions. I mean, there are companies which are you can say like the distribution channel for the company through which they will be releasing these movies. So they generally in the media industry, they generally create other companies which are taking care of all the cinema halls, they are coordinating with the. Uh this movie halls etcetera to book the slots, to to check the time slots etcetera, so so there is a separate company, we generally take care of it. And this comes after the thing they release, right? So there might be some companies through which they will be releasing most of their movies. So when we are discussing about subsidiary operations and market position, the first company that we are talking is Mangala Talkies Limited. This was established, so this was established, okay, this was not acquired, ten years ago in Mumbai. And with a strategical objective to identify movie theaters at different parts of the country and secure time slots of exhibitions. And other logistical aspects, this is what exactly I told you, so Mangala Talkies. Their work is to identify the movie theaters where the movies can be released and then blocking the slots that at what slot. These movies will be released, so that is done by Mangala Talkies. And then they are at the moment logistical related aspects of about fifty percent of the movies exhibited by R and R is handled by this subsidiary. So around fifty percent of the movies that they are releasing, this is taken care of by Mangala Talkies that in which cinema halls, these movies will be released. In recent years, competition between theater owners has intensified. It has been estimated that the total annual turnover for the movie exhibitions in the country has fallen by five percent overall. So the industry of this movie exhibitions, the work which this company does, the industry for that work has actually. Fallen by five percent in the last past two years, the estimated market share of Mangala Talkies is from the industry. You can see that they were somewhere around fourteen percent, which is subsequently reduced to thirteen percent in the same period. And then this is a very low margin game, okay? Prospects for the entertainment industry is uncertain, partly because of the lower box office collections. But also because of availability of alternate entertainment avenues. You can see what is happening nowadays, the movies that initially used to be released on movie theaters. Now there are a lot of movies which are directly indirectly getting released on OTT platform directly. So this is actually killing the movie theaters business, right? But this OTT platform, I'm again telling, this can be considered as an opportunity, okay, not only a threat. So OTT platforms have limited uh the number of movies that are released each year. There is a concern that the OTT platforms will reduce movie production over time, that's also fact. Now people don't have that much that much of time to go to movie theaters to watch a movie of three hours and all, I mean. You must have experienced in practically, there are a lot of people who comes by and and says that they can watch the movie on OTT after a month or something, so they are not in hurry in going to music. Actors to watch those movies, so that is obviously a direct threat to the company for the movie theater business. But this can be an opportunity for another service line which can be OTT platforms, okay? So depending upon, uh situation will remain the way it is, but how we are strategizing, how we are working on that situation. Will decide whether this is a threat or an opportunity, okay? Sangam Theaters Limited, so Sangam Theaters is another company which was acquired about twenty years ago. When it was a newly established company, at the moment about fifty percent of the movie released by R and R is exhibited by Sangam. So they are heavily dependent on Sangam Theaters and Mangala Talkies, both of them are. Taking care of almost hundred percent of the movies released by the company, R and R used government grants available at the time, so they had some government grants. So they acquired this company twenty years before and then they were fortunate to find that there are some government grants. Which were given by the government to this particular company, so since they had some government grants available at that time. They invested in the modernization of the theater, so Sangam Theater is modernized, all those theaters that the Sangam Company is owning. They are actually modernized while the theaters which are there with the Mangala Talkies, they are not that modernized, okay? Because they had no funds, so they used government grant available with Sangam Theater to uh to modernize it. Sangam Theater is now a leading theater operator because of the services, the experience they are giving to the customer. Because the modernization actually uh helped enhancing the user experience, so Sangam Theater is actually doing better than the Mangala Talkies. And Sangam Theater is now a leading theater operator and it attracts a large amount of its business from other companies. Partly because of its operating capabilities, but also because of its relatively low cost. The low costs are achievable because Sangam Theaters uses relatively modern equipments having larger capabilities. And the market is fairly static, increased in size by just two percent in the past two years, owning this particular theaters and the revenue from them. Is basically two percent only, annual turnover for Sangam Theater has risen by eight percent in the same period. And its profits are also rising, but Sangam Theater also exhibits movies of other movie producers. So this is a very important uh kind of a decision that while Mangala Talkies is more or less. Focusing on the movies that are released by this company only, while Sangam Theater is open for everyone. So since they have came up with this modernization as a concept, people wants to come to Sangam Theater and. In they can see the movies which are produced by other other producers as well, that's why their revenue is increasing and then they are. Barely able to increase their profit margin as well over here, so Sangam Theater also exhibits movies of other movie producers. The next is basically Pyle Movies Limited, so while Mangala was established, Sangam was acquired. Now coming back to Pyle Movies, this was also acquired seven years ago. And this was a strategical response to the declining regional movie market, it operates several movie theaters at various states. So Pyle Movies actually owns multiple theaters, R and R has experienced problem with the Pyle Movies since its acquisition. Since now this company owns the movie theaters, the operational cost of running those movie theaters is something which is a very big challenge. For this particular company, Pyle Movies Limited, so operating costs have been higher than expected. Over the past two years, the market has increased by twenty percent, annual revenue of. This has risen by twelve percent of the same period, but its annual profits have risen only slightly, okay? So the profits, the margin is very thin, I will say, so they are saying even though the revenue has increased by twelve percent. But the annual profits has risen only slightly. Now, there is another company which is known as Vijay Screens Limited, so R and R. Established a subsidiary company which is Vijay Screens to create. A platform for documentaries and similar movies created by upcoming directors, so when I was telling you this OTT can be an opportunity as well. I think this Vijay Screens Limited is that opportunity which company is trying to enhance or enhance. So they come up with Vijay Screens Limited and in the Switches Screens Limited, they have come up with a platform for documentaries etcetera and. Similar kind of movies which can be created by upcoming directors and can be released over this platform. Competition in the businesses is strong, you can understand with the Prime Video, Netflix and all, if you're trying to establish probably. Hotstar, Geo, Geo Hotstar and there are so many, I mean Disney World, there are so many OTT platforms, so com- competition is really very tough. So competition in the businesses is strong and profit margins for Vijay Screens are narrow, but R and R considered that owning a platform. For documentary movies would give it greater control over its movies portfolio, right? So they can decide when to release, how much audience is required, I mean, there are a lot of things that they can do, permutation, combination, so when you have an OTT platform. Subscription subscription fees can also be another source of revenue, so they are just kind of thinking that. There are a lot of opportunities in relation to Vijay Screens, so this is what I told you, they are actually internally thinking that this can be the one of the. Uh opportunity rather than a threat, okay? Now, when while go through going through the case studies, we uh came across two annexures. Make sure A was in relation to the KMPs, which is maybe the board of directors of the company, the second annexure which is annexure B. Was for the customer feedbacks, so we'll quickly go through with this kind of uh situation. So the board of directors of R and R comprises of following persons. So if you can recall, there are three promoters which we initially discussed. The three promoters' name is Mr. Shah Ratan Kumar, promoter and non-executive chairman. So a company can have non-executive chairman or an executive chairman, an executive chairman is someone who takes care of the daily operations aspect. While a non-executive chairman is someone who takes care of the who oversees basically about the company and the business, they don't get involved with the daily. They don't get involved with the daily operations of the company. So if in case a company has a non-executive chairman, then in that case a managing director has to be there, right? And that's the reason why Rani Kapoor is a promoter and simultaneously a managing director as well because of the daily operations, okay? You must have come across this one designation which is known as executive chairman and managing director. It happens generally because if you are the executive chairman, you will be managing the operations of the company itself. So both of these designations can be owned by a single person as well. Now Mister Shah Ratan Kumar, who is a promoter and non-executive chairman, who is this person? He is a celebrated movie star and he starred in more than two hundred movies in his career of fifty years. He is particularly popular as a romantic lead. He is also a reputed film producer. He has won a number of prestigious awards, including the lifetime achievement award as well as Dada Sahib Palke Academy Award, which is one of the greatest award given to an actor or actress. Then we have Rani Kapoor, who is also a promoter and she is taking the lead of being a managing director. So has been in charge of company's operational management and efficiency and in controlling on set activities. She has won a number of prestigious awards, including CEO of the Year and Businesswoman of the Year. Earlier, the position was held by Mister A Suleiman. So this position, the managing director was someone else earlier, but now she is the managing director. Miss Nutan Dubey, again a promoter and joint managing director, undertakes the day-to-day creative directions of the movies produced by the company. She has won a number of prestigious awards, including the Businesswoman of the Year and Entrepreneur of the Year. Then we have Sana Mukherjee, who is an independent director, okay? We need to be pretty cautious while we are reading about an independent director. An industry veteran with over three decades of experience in the media. So I mean more than thirty years of experience in media and entertainment business. She was appointed as CEO of Ynet nineteen to drive its transition into a truly, truly integrated media company across broadcast and digital. Then across entertainment and sports in over eight languages. Her initial appointment as an independent director was for one year. So she was appointed earlier for one year of a tenure and then later on she was appointed, reappointed for another term of five years. So this is the second term which is going to complete on thirtieth July. We are doing the audit of April to March twenty-five. In July, the the term of this independent director will come to an end. The board proposes to appoint her for another term of five years. If her appointment proposal is accepted as per the applicable law and regulations, Miss Sana will attain sixty years of age on completion of her third term. So we need to, I mean, it's couple of facts that we need to be very careful about that this independent director was appointed for a term of one year in the first uh kind of an appointment. Then this was reappointed, she was reappointed for five years and the term is about to come to thirtieth. July is when the term will come to an end. The board is proposing to reappoint, reappoint her for another five years. If her appointment proposal is accepted, okay, she will attain the age of sixty-eight years by the time the term will come to an end. Next, we have Mister S. Dutt, independent director, who is a chartered accountant by profession and is a life and fellow member of the Institute of Chartered Accountants in England and Wales and a fellow member of the ICI. He was a partner at CAF, Salman and Amir from nineteen seventy and was a senior partner chairman there. Then we have Prem Narayan, who is group CFO for this company. He is also a chartered accountant by profession and a life and fellow member of the ICI in Australia, Institute of Chartered Accountants in Australia and a fellow member of the ICI India. He also served as the chairman of the Direct Excessional Committee for the Southern India Chamber of Commerce and Industry and was a member of the Board of Governors of the Dune School, which is one of the top-notch school in the industry of this schooling. Earlier, this position was held by Amrishnaath till last year's group CFO, Amrishnaath was there. Then we have Mister Julia Chen, group head, secretary. She joined the company in the current year, holds a bachelor's degree in the commerce and a bachelor's degree in law from the University of Delhi. She has over thirty-six years of reach experience in finance, capital markets, banking, general corporate advice and regulatory practices. She was a senior partner at BZA Legal, executive vice president and head of legal and compliance department at CPL. Previously, this position was held by Miss Tipika Single. You see, when we talk about board of directors, you know, like CFOs, CEOs, managing directors, executive chairmans and all, it becomes very important. They all are KMPs, key management persons, and it becomes very important to check whether they are capable of handling the responsibilities which the company is giving them. So we need to have their background, their experience, their qualification, like how many companies they have worked, what kind of responsibilities was there earlier. Whether their experience is relevant for this kind of a company or not. So there are a lot of things that we need to do for around KMPs. We call it background check for KMPs, okay? So maybe that's why there is a lot of information which is given for KMPs. Then we have an extra V, which is extract from customers' feedback. So Yusuf has written that Rahul and Raj, I believe that the ongoing movie experience doesn't end when the credits roll. Every visit to Sangam Theaters is an opportunity to create lasting memories and I am committed to making each one better than the last. If you can recall, then Sangam Talkies was a company which used government grant, right? For modernization of all the theaters. So when somebody is watching movies in the Sangam Theater, their experience is enhanced and then they are really happy. So there is a positive feedback from the customer who has given a rating of three out of three. And then the response from the company was, thank you so much for your kind words. We are thrilled to hear that you had such a positive experience at Sangam Theaters. We have worked hard to make sure every visit is as seamless and enjoyable as possible. From the moment you park to the end, okay? Then we have Tina, who is writing, so she didn't go to Sangam Theater. She ended up watching a movie with Mangala Talkies, which was the first one, Talkies, which the company somehow wasn't able to invest from modernization perspective, okay? So the experience of Tina is, while I have always enjoyed watching movies at Mangala Talkies, my recent visit left me with mixed feelings. The movie itself was fantastic, but I noticed that the service quality has slipped a bit. The concession stand looked longer, took longer than the usual and the seating, seating was also not comfortable. Now she has given a rating of one out of three, so the experience was not that good for the Mangala Talkies. Okay, so to which the company has reverted by saying, thank you for sharing your experience. We truly appreciate your loyalty to Mangala Talkies and sorry to hear that your recent, recent visit didn't meet your expectations. Your feedback is invaluable and we want to know that we are talking, we are taking it seriously. We are already looking into the service delays at the concession stand and the sitting comfort. And we are committed to making improvements. We hope you will notice the difference on your next visit and we look forward to welcoming you back to a better experience soon. So with this, at least the background of the case study has come to an end. And if, if you noticed, there is a lot of information which is generally given in these case studies. So there is a high probability that most of the information which is given in these case studies is not directly relevant. Mark my words, directly relevant for the questions that will be annexed with these kind of case studies. But the point is, this still can have some indirect usage of this information where you will be kind of responding to the situations. So it is again highly recommended that you, you should make a thorough kind of a note of all these case studies because they are very lengthy at times. You see, I have gone through this particular one case study and going through it in detail or, you know, just reading through along with you guys, it has taken me already one hour, okay? So just imagine that we are going through these case studies and we are not making notes. I mean, there is a high probability you will miss something which may be very important to answer the questions which will be aligned. And if in case you think you have sufficient time during the exam to go through the case study again, then I am really sorry. I mean, this is, this is going to be a time constraint. So the point is basically it generally don't allow or don't give you that kind of a liberty to go through the whole case study again. So I will quickly show you that uh I'll quickly summarize actually that what we have gone through this particular uh case study. So we are talking about Rahul and Raj, which started small screen nineteen ninety-five. By the time it was two thousand one, they got their biggest screen hit. Mister Shah, Rani and Miss Nutan, they are the promoters for this company. In nineteen ninety-five, they first appeared in the movie business. In two thousand one, they got their first hit. And by the time it was two thousand fifteen, they become the leader. And by the time it was two thousand twenty-four, they started with their OTT as well, right? Which was, I think, Vijay, if I can recall correctly. Then there was a company which is named uh yeah, Vijay Screens Limited. So they started with this OTP, OTP platform as well. When I am talking about the industry, it is an industry which releases around two thousand pictures every year. Three billion audience is there, the current uh turnover is around two sixty billion, then by twenty forty, they are expecting this to grow to six hundred billion. So it's a, it's going to be a very big industry. Uh including motion pictures, the opportunity is that audience with the customized content tailored to their preferences. Now everyone is running towards that kind of a content, so this is an opportunity. I discuss about what is virtual reality and augmented reality as well for the benefit of everyone. The mega trends that this company, this industry is actually going through is the first one is the use of the technology which is VR and AR. The second one was about going live, kind of an option which I, I told you like for movie, for these cricket matches etcetera. We have this kind of a scenario. And then the third one is basically the globalization of this media content where whether a lot of people, I mean, anyone from anywhere can create a content and can upload it and at times audience find that uh interesting as well. So they get involved when it comes to entertainment to these platforms rather than going and watching a movie. So this is another mega trend that is upcoming in the movie industry. Movie making process, I told you it's a four-step process. The first one is the ideation, the other one is pre-production, the second, third is the production and fourth one is the release whereby. So a company incurs losses, they incur losses on all these kind of steps. So we, losses, sorry, I mean expenses. So we need to see that at what level of expenses, how we are going to treat them. Whether there will be capital work in progress, whether there will be uh kind of intangible assets to be reported or whether there will be revenue expenditure in nature. So we need to kind of come across all those uh situations. Strategy of the company is expanding into non-fiction. They came out this company, uh this one movie locked in. Quality over quantity is something they are already focusing upon and then they are trying to enhance their user experience by adopting to the technology of VR and AR. So these are the highlights of the current year, the source of the Vasayibo, these are a couple of movies they are going to launch, The Locked Hard and Baahubal, okay? New projects and strategies, decisions. So there is a concept similar which they are going through for women empowerment, okay? And then they have abandoned a series which is known as Kalin Bhairya because it was not able to uh provide the narratives that they wanted to. Then we have music rights and revenue, so music rights were sold to a company which is, okay, I have not written the name, but there is a company we will see when we will go back to the history, sold to the music companies at a production stage and in perpetuity for a fixed fees. Producer has the right to future royalty after only when the company has achieved a threshold of sales because they have already paid a fixed fees. So they don't want to pay any further royalty till the time they will not be able to achieve a designated amount, which is generally known as threshold sales. And then the recorded royalty will be recorded in the books once the company, the music company tells or confirms that they are able to achieve this sales threshold and now they, they will start paying the royalty to the company. On first September two thousand twenty-four, which is the year under auditing, three upcoming movies, yeah. So the company name was Gold, this is the music company to whom the rights were sold for three upcoming movies in three thousand lakhs on the date of contract signing. But uh there was a condition that the company will refund proportionate if in case the release will not happen. So on first December twenty-four, which is the year under consideration, the period under consideration, on first January twenty-five, again period under consideration. But this is a subsequent event, probably not a revenue that the company should be recovering in the previous year. So first films, music rights, second films, music rights and third films, movie music rights, these are the dates when the company got it, okay? Then we have financial and trouble purchase, which is seventy percent increase in the revenue, okay? They will new to five ninety-three crores in comparison to three thirty-seven crores. There are some financial highlights, cost of production again increased to five eleven uh in comparison to three twenty-seven, producing more than one thousand hours. Abita loss has reduced from one twenty-two crore to nineteen crores. AR uh from one sixty-four days, it has come down to one sixty. Auditors, auditor and so Ranveer and Ranveer Company is there. They are there from last four years and then they have two concerns. One is related to the engagement letter, whether they should be using issuing an engagement letter or not. And whether a balance confirmation for the AR, what to do with the cases where the balance confirmation will not be received. So they have these major two concerns because I think AR is due for significant period of amount, amount of period. So subsidiaries, we have Mangala Talkies, we already discussed it, then Sangam Theater is there. We have Pyle Movies Limited, uh which is high in operating cost and all. And then we have Vijay Street Limited, which is another OTT platform, which the company has come up with. And then we have uh I mean directors and all their information is there. So this is the case study basically that we have come across. Now we will move to the questions and answers that they are there in relation to this case study. But before moving there, uh I would like to know if in case, I think I have a question basically uh in relation to the case study, understanding of this case study itself. So if you think there is a question that you would like to uh me to go through in terms of explaining the case study itself, then we can start discussion around that. I'll pause for a couple of minutes just to see if in case somebody wants to ask anything. I hope the way we explained or we went into detail around this case study, the case study at least should be clear to everyone. At least we should not have any questions on the case study itself. Okay, Ajiji, can we move to uh basically the question and answer or can we take a ten minutes break and then we can start with the question and answer? What's your suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Hmm?
Uh ten minute break kar sakte hain sir.
And then probably we can come back and then we, we can start with the questions and answers directly.
Okay, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, so by what time we should come back? Ab bataiye mujhe.
Ten minutes, sir, wait.
Ten minutes, so it's ninety, thirty, thirty-six or something, thirty-seven basically. So we can come back by fifty, right? Ten, right, ten to eight basically, okay? Ten minutes to, so, so is it okay with everyone? I hope it's okay. So let's see you in pro, right? We'll see you in ten minutes then. Thank you, everyone. Okay, just a minute. Okay, perfect. So I have the, I, I hope the screen is visible to everyone now?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Okay, so. Okay, somebody was saying something?
Yes, visible, sir.
Okay, proper. So now we have come uh to the multiple choice question. I mean, the way the case study has been gone through, there is a very good Chinese proverb which goes like, well planned is fifty percent done. So if you have spent enough time, I mean good time in understanding the case study itself, it means your fifty percent of the job is already done. So when we come back to the multiple choice questions, we will take one by one and then we will see. Uh we'll definitely like to interact with you guys as well on your opinion, okay? So the first question is basically, should the auditors send an engagement letter for the audit of the current financial year of R and R? Choose the current correct statement. So the auditors were deliberating, if you can recall, because they were the auditors from last four years and then they think there is no significant change in the management responsibility or in the laws and regulations. So they were deliberating whether they need to send the appointment letter, yes or no, yeah. Over here, if you can see that considering the continuation of the audit, the engagement partner is deliberating whether a new engagement letter. Okay? Didn't get you? Such as. I want to screen to, yeah, screen to visible logi, okay? So during the uh, so they are saying they considering the continuation of the audit, the engagement partner is deliberating whether a new engagement letter should be sent for the audit of the current year, that is ended thirty-first March twenty-five. Till last year, an engagement letter was sent for audit of every financial year despite no change of laws and regulations, auditor, management and responsibilities, auditors or management's responsibility basically. So so in terms of the responsibilities, everything is same, there is no change in the responsibilities. So they are asking, should we send an engagement letter? Is it like a compulsion? Yes or no? The available options that you have, so the available options to this question is, new engagement letter should be sent if there is recent change of senior management or similar at R and R. So they are saying the new engagement letter should only be okay, sorry. So they are saying the new engagement letter should be sent if there is a recent change of senior management or similar at R and R. Second option is new engagement letter should be sent every year including recurring audit engagements under the company's act. So in the first, they are saying that the new engagement letter should be sent only if there is a recent change of senior management or similar. Second, they are saying that the new engagement letter should be sent every year including tracking audit engagements under the company's act. Third option is it is optional to obtain to new engagement letter for recurring audit engagements as N V S A S A two hundred ten. Or then the last one is the company's act two thousand thirteen mandates auditors to obtain an engagement letter for every audit. So what do you think? What is the correct answer? Do you think the law actually made this compulsion to send the engagement letter for every year or it is suggesting that only when there is a serious change, there is some significant change in the leadership or the responsibilities of the auditors and management, then only that engagement letter will be required? You can, I think it should be B between A and C, okay? So there is only one answer that we need to choose.
Sir, I'm, yeah. Sorry, in this case, while I am going through the case study in the paragraph when that Popeye lost to four years continuously the same auditor. But they used to send that engagement letter every year, but that law, law and regulation is also is not changes. But that, that, that is not a case. But when we are coming to the senior management position, the table, the Ronnie Kapoor is M D. It recently changed. Earlier it was positioned by the Suleiman. And also when I look at that the group CEO also is changed and the group head secretary, secretary also changed. See, the S A two ten, two ten, the agreeing tension condition is warrant whenever there is a senior management changes, we need to give the new engagement letter. So I go with the option based on that uh the situation, sir.
Okay, perfectly fine. So that's what I told you, that the first answer is basically new engagement letter should be sent if there is a recent change of senior management or similar at R and R, which you rightfully pointed out. So the A is the current correct answer. But my point is basically, I told you that even if there is no significant change in the leadership or the key managerial positions or probably the responsibilities that the auditors or the uh management is, has uh in terms of the audit engagement. We will still recommend. Engagement letter is a kind of a very important document. And when we do acceptance and continuation procedure, this is by default irrespective of there is any changes that happened or not. It is irrespective of those changes, the engagement letter should be there. I mean, this is a general industrial practice which can be, I mean, you can understand that doing an auditor, we need to work more conservatively. So this is more conservative when it comes to the approach. Then irrespective of what is happening in the company, you are advised to issue an engagement letter, okay? So in this case, the new engagement letter should be sent if there is a recent change of senior management or similar at an R R. So in our case, this should be. Moving to the second question, I hope you don't have any concerns in the first question, everyone has clarity.
Yes, sir, but the thing is that the first question for S A two ten also is stating that whenever there is a law changes or R and R changes, senior management changes, that time it's warrant to send that new engagement letter. But otherwise it's not needed, but however, as you advised, it's a normal practice, we can send the engagement letter on every years.
Right, so you can definitely have or go through the industrial practice if it is more conservative than what law says, right? So that is always allowed, I mean, it's not, there is nothing negative around it. So even if there is no change, you can still decide to send the engagement letter, okay? But in this case, there are changes, so obviously a new engagement letter is required to be sent. Okay, then the second question is about the type of confirmations. Which is what type of confirmation request has been designed by the auditor while auditing trade receivables? So the options are whether it is a negative confirmation request or it is a positive confirmation request or it is a hybrid confirmation request or is it a blank confirmation request? What do you think? So we discussed this in detail that this was an area of concern for the auditors as well and then they were planning to send the independence confirmations to the account receivables. But what kind of confirmation they are planning to go ahead?
Sir, I go with the positive confirmation records because that in the, in the para, it's discussed independent balance confirmation. They are, they expecting because the receivables is high and all these things, they decided in the paragraph what we discussed. I note also, I mean, in the notes, I have mentioned that as well.
I'm, I'm really happy that you have paid the required attention and if you can see the screen, this particular para is already in front of you whereby they are seeing. The confirmation letter requests the customers to respond directly to the auditor, which means what kind of confirmation is this? Is it a independent confirmation, a direct or an indirect confirmation? What do you think? Is it an independent or an independent confirmation?
It, it is independent confirmation, that, that, auditor also directly, they are receiving that confirmation from the, uh, party.
So we, right, so we call it independent confirmation or it can be considered as a direct confirmation as well, okay? Now the confirmation letter requests the customer to respond directly to the auditor indicating whether the party agrees or disagree. So this is really important that they want the party to respond back. Even if they are agreeing or they are not agreeing, doesn't matter, but in both the situations, they are saying that they should be reverting back, okay? So when there is a request to revert back before we can rely on the confirmation, considered as a positive confirmation or a negative confirmation?
Yeah, it is a positive because if otherwise, no, if the, when they disagree, that time only if you are requesting, that is negative. But if you whether he is not agreeing, we are getting, we are asked them to respond back, so it is a positive confirmation.
Right, and to your knowledge, the negative confirmations are also not allowed, right? The guidances that we have from I C I, we should not be surpluting any negative confirmations. I mean, a negative confirmation is a confirmation whereby you send it to a receivable or to bank or to legal or to anyone else, maybe credit confirmation, whatever you think you'd be sending a confirmation against. In a negative confirmation, you can write down that if by this date, by this time, you are not able to revert to us, then we will assume that the balance that the company has in their books is accurate, is correct. So in many cases, it has been noticed that people generally don't respond to the confirmation, not because they agree to the balance which is written. But because they are not that organized, they are not keeping their books updated or they are not comfortable sending the confirmation back, which I discussed when we were discussing about this. So it is always advisable to send the positive confirmation, okay? Then we also come across at times which is known as open confirmation or close confirmation. Anyone of you would like to throw some light on what is considered as an open confirmation and what is considered as a close confirmation? Anyone? So when you send a confirmation, it can be direct or indirect, it can be further positive or negative. So in our case, this is the direct confirmation, which is an independent confirmation and a positive confirmation. But there is another kind of a category which is open or closed confirmation. So we need to check all three, so the first is it is a direct confirmation to us, second is it is a positive confirmation and whether it is an open or closed confirmation, what do you understand by that?
Sir, I am not very about the direct and close and open confirmation, but in the negative confirmation, that we studied that in S A five zero five is talk about. When, when there is that internal control and the, the reliability of that customer relationship and everything goes good. Only those which with their balance is also very less, those category, we will send that negative confirmation, otherwise we always.
Can tell you like if it is an intercompany balance, let us suppose you want a confirmation around it, you can still choose to go with the negative confirmation because it's a group audit, right? But for any third party, it's not an industry practice, so what I was telling you that if you think that the decision of industry is more conservative in terms of what law is saying that you can follow the industry practices. So as an industry practice, we don't send, there is a clear guidance that the negative confirmation should not be sent, except a rare kind of a situation which we generally don't consider. So when we plan for audit, we go with the positive confirmation itself, I hope it is clear, right?
Yes, sir, your, your point is very well taken, what is a closed and open, sir?
Yeah, so open and close basically confirmation is when if you are kind of, you finally decided that you will be writing down the balance which is to be confirmed, then it at times considered as a closed confirmation, okay? But if you are not writing that confirmation balance, so let us suppose you are sending a confirmation to the accountant receivable and then you are saying then that please direct us back to the balance that you have for this company as on the balance sheet date. So you yourself are not mentioning about the amount, because if you mention about the amount, this account receivable, there is probably a debtor or someone, they will get to know what is the balance and then the reconciliation can become a challenge, all those disputes and everything will come across. So at times, we don't write that balance, it's kind of an open balance so that as an auditor, we should know that what is there in your books. So we send it open and we ask them to send us the amount which they have for the company in their books. So when we are asking for an open confirmation, the possibility is when the company is sending us back the confirmation. We can reconcile this with the account receivable balance that we have in our audit ease books and if there is any differences, we can definitely go in deep. Or we can sit with management to reconcile those balances. So generally, it is trapped for like an open confirmation. Then at times, it's not only always like you want to confirm the balance at the end. Like for receivables or for payables, at times you may decide internally that you can have a confirmation related to some transactions. So that's also our industry susceptible kind of a practice whereby you generally don't sign that this is the total outstanding at the year end. But you, you tell that this total outstanding is basically comprising of, let us suppose ten invoices and then you are just want the data to confirm five invoices, three invoices out of that total, right? So that's also industry practice, but that can be considered as an, probably an alternate procedure when you will be sending second reminder, third reminder, then you may decide that maybe the, the company that you are talking to is not that organized. Or the, the customer that you are talking to is not that organized, that they might have their books updated. So it's better to get a confirmation probably for some material kind of transactions rather than the account balance at the year end. Okay, so that's also something that we can decide. So when it comes to the confirmation, I just discussed that we have direct and indirect confirmation, we have open and closed confirmation and then we have positive and negative confirmation. In any case, the industrial practice, I will say, it is to send direct confirmations which are positive in nature and open. I hope now it's clear.
Yes, sir, very much clear, sir, and I go to open and closed, and all, all the point very clear, thank you.
Okay, great. So now coming back to what we were discussing as an question, so the question is basically what type of confirmation request has been designed by the auditor while auditing trade receivables? So is it like negative? Is it positive or hybrid or blank confirmation? Hybrid can be like both, both can be clapped together like positive or negative, but we are going to send the positive confirmation, that's the answer for this question, okay? I hope this is clear. Moving back to the third question, the third question is all about what amount of revenue from music rights to be recognized in the financial statements of F Y twenty four twenty five? Okay, now, if you can recall, that there were three movies music rights that were sold to a company, I think Gold was the name of this company.
Yes, sir, Gold.
Yeah, so if you go to that particular para, you will realize that there were three movies music rights that were, that were sold. But during our concerned year, which is twenty four twenty five, only two movies were released. The third movie was released, right, which was in somewhere in July, if you can go to the notes, right? Yeah, so you, you will recall this, it means when it comes to music rights and all, where is that para? Just give me a minute, let me take you to that.
On the first movie, they, they got the release on the first is December twenty four, second one is the first January twenty five, third one is first. So we can recognize two, two, two thousand lakhs, because that is the first to that year.
So it is already written here, first December twenty four, first January twenty five, so they will come under our financial year twenty four twenty five. While the third film, this was actually in financial year twenty five and twenty six. So considering an assumption that one thousand lakhs was for each music movie music right, we can recognize a revenue of two thousand lakhs. Okay, that's the assumption that we need to take. And the answer to this question will be how much that we need to recognize is the answer is two thousand lakhs. I hope this was a very simple question, so none of you have any problem, I hope it, right? Do you want me to discuss this further?
Yes, sir, also the index one on five also is talk about when there is a probable amount should be known in the, in initially. Then that case only we will recognize only that thousand lakhs is not probable because we do not know when the music is released. In this case, according this fact, we can recognize only the two thousand lakhs.
I think a very good point whereby you can recall that the music right was sold on a condition. And the condition was that if because of any X Y Z reasons, if the movie will not be released, then they have to pay back the partial amount. So they have to refund that revenue which they have booked, so we can only recognize that much of revenue which is certain. In this case, two movies were released during the financial year, so the right to receive this income for the company was established. So we will be recognizing only revenue to that extent. Okay? Then we have around Miss Sana Mukherjee, reappointed as an independent director for another term of five years. Okay, so let's go back to Sana Mukherjee to understand that what is exactly written about her over there. So Sana Mukherjee, it is written that she is an industry veteran with over three decades. So it's already thirty years of experience in the media and entertainment business, appointed as CEO of Five Net nineteen to drive its transition into a truly integrated media company across broadcast and digital. And across entertainment and sports in over eight languages, her initial appointment, I think this is an important thing for us. That her initial appointment was as an independent director, this was only for one year. Now, she is again reappointed for another term of five years, so there isn't, again, I mean, this is term two. So this is the term one and then we have term two as well. So we appointed her already two times and the second term is also coming to an end on thirtieth of July, okay? The board is proposing that in July, we should reappoint her for another term of five years and by the time this term will complete, she will only already attain the age of sixty eight years. Okay, so this is the kind of a situation that Miss Sana is already in. Now the question says that can Miss Sana Mukherjee be reappointed as an independent director for another term of five years? A very simple question, the options are under the company's act two thousand thirteen. An independent director can be appointed for a maximum period of ten years, okay? So Miss Sana Mukherjee can be reappointed as an independent director for the remaining period of four years. So it says like she was appointed in term one for one year and then she was appointed for five years in term two. So in total, she has completed six years, but as law says that ten years is something that is allowed, so she can be appointed but only for four years, not five years. This is the first option. The second option that we have is under the company's act two thousand thirteen, an independent director can be appointed for two consecutive terms, each term being five years, okay? So this is the law as per company's act. So it says like they can be appointed each term being five years, that is ten years. Miss Sana Mukherjee can be reappointed as an independent director for another term of five years since her first term was lesser period, that is one year instead of five years as provided another company's act. So this is more or less like in different words, but the situation is same, right? That the other point is also saying that she is not, she has not completed ten years, so we can still appoint her, right? The third condition says, third solution says, under the company's act two thousand thirteen, an independent director can be appointed for maximum two consecutive terms. So the third option says that the maximum two consecutive terms can be there. Each term can be up to five years, so they are not saying it is for five years, it is up to five years. Miss Sana Mukherjee cannot be reappointed, so she cannot be reappointed as an independent director. Since she would attain age of sixty eight years of age on completion of the proposed term of five years. Any person attaining the age of sixty eight years cannot be appointed as an independent director. So first two were more or less focusing on ten year as an availability. The third one is more or less focusing on the age of Sana. Now the last one option that we have is under the company's act two thousand thirteen, an independent director can be appointed for maximum two consecutive terms, okay? Each term can be up to five years, that is ten years, this is the maximum. Miss Sana Mukherjee cannot be appointed as an independent director since she has completed two consecutive terms. Appointment for a term less than five years is also treated as one term. So even if somebody is appointed for, let us suppose, one year, that will be considered as first term of that director. So the law says that anyone can be appointed or reappointed for two consecutive terms. It is not like that they can be appointed for ten years in a consecutive kind of a manner. So that's the fourth option basically, so what do you think, which ones you think is kind of correct as per you?
Oh, sir, in, in, in your module A, we have actually the T A in the company side. It's October sixth and one forty nine, stock server two consecutive terms is allowed, thereafter, three year cooling period for the director, then only the independent director can be appointed as a director. But consecutive terms up to five years is right, but if it is one year or less than one year also, it will be term this year, one consecutive term, one term. So in, in, in this case, the two terms is completed, so she need for another three years of cooling period. I think I go for option D, and I have one doubt on that option C. Actually, the independent territory, the minimum age, minimum age is twenty one years, maximum seventy, seventy years. The independent director can be appointed, I believe, but, uh, sir, my doubt is, see, I definitely go for option D. However, I have one doubt on the sixty, see sixty eight years, it's an example, only one term is completed. Can she appoint at another term on, on the age of sixty eight?
No, so the point is basically, so you are saying if in case it was only term one for her, right? Is this what you are saying, right? And then let us suppose she is attaining a age of sixty eight years and then you are asking if it was only term one, then whether she was eligible for appointment or not, right? So she was absolutely eligible for a point, there is no doubt in it, okay? Because sixty eight years is just written for the confusion, to create the confusion in the case study, okay? The age is not sixty years, sixty eight years, right? For a listed company, even the saving guidelines is there that this can be up to seventy, seventy five years as well. So this was just, this was just to create a confusion so that the, the students can actually start focusing on this sixty eight years rather than on the term that she was appointed for, okay?
Right, so only, only, that is only confusion for me, but I, I go for often D.
Yeah, so D is the correct option whereby it says even if somebody is appointed for term of one year, that will be considered as term one for them. And anyone can be appointed only for consecutively two terms, so let us suppose if even she was appointed for another year in the term two. Then also she couldn't be appointed, reappointed as a director, independent director, okay? And she consecutively covered both the terms, even if they were only for one year each, okay? Moving to the, yeah, moving to the next question, which is whether the cost of production of Kalinbaya? So if you can recall, there was this movie, right, the concept, concept was there, maybe some, it was some at an ideation stage or maybe at a pre-development stage, pre-production stage, right? So the point is basically whether the cost of production of Kalinbaya, so what we did as a company, we kind of stopped, uh, this, this particular. Uh, this, this particular series, right? So we want to write off all this Kalinbaya kind of expenses. Since it was not developed and it was before that, it was just a conceptualization. So can it be claimed as a deduction while filing the I T R by the company? Do you think the cost of production of Kalinbaya to whatever extent it is? Is it possible that they can claim this as cost of production in their income tax return? So what do you think? Anyone, the first, okay, so the first one is the cost of production of abandoned movies. Can be claimed as a deduction while filing I T R by the company as a capital expenditure. So the first one says capital expenditure, the other says that this is a revenue expenditure, so it, it can be claimed. And the third one is says deduction of cost of production cannot be claimed under rule nine A of the income tax rules. Since the movie was not certified for release by the Board of Censors, okay? So it was not certified, so the expenses cannot be claimed. The fourth option is deduction of cost of production can be claimed under rule nine A of the income tax rules nineteen sixty two. Since the cost of production did not exceed the monetary limit of five hundred crores prescribed in a force said roots. Okay, so that is another, uh, kind of a condition. When you will come across a case study, they put a lot of conditions to at times confuse you guys, right? So as a student, obviously, we want you to stick to the concepts that you know. Rather than getting, uh, kind of confused with these kind of additional information or situations created by the, in, in the case studies. So what do you think which is the correct answer in the given situation?
Sir, I feel that any expenditure is given, say example, even in the P P also, when we will capitalize. When the, all the expenses are met at condition that the produce, the everything is, we will see it, then only we will capitalize. In, in the same time, this particular movie is not yet produced and is not yet released, and it is not at all determined. So I feel that like it is abundant, so it has to be expenditure as far as my point of view is concerned, so I go with option B.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, I mean, when it comes to movie, as we discussed earlier as well, there are four stages of movie, okay? What are those four stages? The four stages are basically that the first one is the ideation. Whereby an idea of the movie will be there, the conceptualization or doing Rekey to finalize locations. Or probably some kind of script scouting, these are the kind of areas which were involved. After you have kind of completed that first, first stage of ideation, the second stage is whereby you will be finalizing the artist. You know, and then you will probably plan for, uh, all this location, script writing will be finalized, so everything will be, that is known as pre-production. Before you jump to the production stage, once you will start the production stage, that's actually a trigger point whereby now. The movie that you are kind of making, it can be shot and then probably all the V R's, I R's, identification, visual designing. Uh, dubbing etcetera is, is at this stage and at this stage only you can sell. Your, uh, music, movie, music right as well, right, before it will move to the release stage. Where this will be approved by, uh, Board of Sensors, you can kind of capitalize, right? All these expenses, expenses during the production stage, but until unless this is not moved to the production stage. If it is an ideation stage or if it is a pre, uh, kind of a production stage, then all those expenses are considered to be, uh, revenue expenditures. So they are like, you know, like all those expenses, we are not even sure whether the future economic benefits, it's just like an idea, that is in my mind. So we are not even sure whether the concept will be kind of finalized or any future economic benefits will be there. So in those cases, what we do, all expenses till your pre-production stage, they are. Uh, considered revenue in nature and then they are expensed out in the P and L, so when you will be doing it, this is a very well established practice. And income tax also has no concerns over it, they also allow you to consider these expenditures that you incurred as a revenue expenditure. And you can definitely claim them as, as, uh, as a revenue expenditure in your income tax return, I hope it is clear.
Yes sir.
Okay, perfect, now we are moving to a stage which is known as descriptive questions. So when it comes to descriptive questions, I mean, there are a lot of, lot of information that you need to write. So even though I am sure that you have access to this particular case study, but when somebody is asking like question number six, okay? In this, they are asking evaluate the value chain of R and R focusing on the production. Acquisition, distribution and exhibition of movies, so you can understand production, acquisition. Uh, the acquisition strategy of various companies were acquired, right, there were two, uh, companies, they were, they were acquired. How the production is moving and then probably the distribution, you can understand this. Uh, the two talkies were there who were into kind of helping with the distribution and exhibition of the movies. So they are saying just highlight or evaluate the value chain of the R and R. Focusing on the production, acquisition, distribution and exhibition of the movies and discuss the operational challenges in each stage and how. They affect the company's efficiency and overall success, so you can definitely see the company was facing challenges in production. Whereby some of the ideas were dropped, but they were doing good as well, there are three movies which are already in plan, right? Uh, when it comes to acquisition, they acquire two companies, distribution channel is being set up, but again. Exhibition of movies probably this Mangal talkies was something that they were facing a challenge because, because of the, uh. Decreasing what I'll say, uh, customer experience, so that is what is happening over there. And then, uh, there is another talkies which is doing good, okay, because they were able to spend the government grant on, on that. And then they also launched with another strategy which was there, so they launched, uh, the. Uh, Vijay Cinemas as well, which was basically more or less their O T T platform. Uh, for the, uh, new directors, they can create documentaries, so I mean, I mean, this is all the value chain, so they are saying that. You know, like you need to discuss the operational challenges, like, like there was a company, they, uh, I think acquired, but there was huge challenges that they were facing. Which was like the operational challenges because the cost of operations is, this is file movies limited, right? So all these things, they just want you to summarize it and to, to help how company can survive in this kind of a situation. So when it comes to the descriptive questions, I mean, there is no limit to how much you can write. It totally depends upon, upon you that how you want to kind of summarize it, okay? So but if I'll be there in that case and if I need to make a summary, I'll definitely like to create a value chain. I would like to see that what are the various departments of the companies, how the department organization has happened, what is the organizational structure? What are the opportunities in the market, how the company is going to plan to, uh, I mean, tap on that potential of those opportunities. And then what are the threats or challenges the company is going through, including their exhibition of movies kind of situations? So for, to answer this, I'd directly like to jump to the answer of this particular question. So that you can have an idea then how to kind of summarize, because there is a lot that you can cover. And that will be for every student, it can be a difference, so there is no right or wrong answer, it is more or less like about the strategy. And how are you concluding, as in, let us suppose if you are the auditor, considering all this situation. Maybe you can come back and you can say like this, you have some doubts on the going concern of this, uh, kind of. Uh, company which is file cinemas limited and all, because the operational challenges are, are very much there, right? Vijay's films limited is also not doing good, you may raise a concern on the going concern of Mangala talkies as well. That how are you going to kind of survive because the customer feedback is not at all good and the revenue has also fallen, right? So on this, maybe Sangam Talkies theater is doing good, but the point is basically the margin is very less. So I mean, as an auditor, there are a lot of concerns that you can come around with. And then you can definitely discuss with management that what is their plan going ahead, uh, in terms of considering or. Not getting this going concern of different subsidiaries impacted, right? So this is actually, you know, there is, there is lot that you can discuss and there is lot that you can cover. So I'll directly jump to how the solution of this case study, uh, particularly for this particular question is given. And then you can have an idea that how you can write, okay, so I hope you can see this. That evaluation of the value chain and of Rahul and Raj Films Limited, so if you want, we can go through this together. I mean, there is, there is a lot of information, this is basically a summary of the case study itself with your own suggestions or inputs. That in this given situation, what do you think which side the company will go, okay? So evaluation of the value chain of Rahul and Raj Films Limited. The value chain of R and R can be assessed by analyzing its primary and support activities that contribute to creating value. And maintaining a competitive advantage in the entertainment industry. R and R engages in the production and acquisition of movies as well as distribution and exhibitions, okay? So they are saying that the support activities for the form is that the infrastructure is there, human resource management is there, technology. Development is there and procurement is there, right? Then they have inbound logistics, they have operations, outbound logistics, marketing and sales and then service. I mean, they, they have just kind of categorized the whole of the organization into various categories. But if you don't want to do this or you don't get an idea after reading the case study that you can present this. Uh, the value chain of the company in this manner, that you can, you can come back with a simple kind of a, a stage as well. Whereby you can mention that for an ideation stage, the company has this stra- strategy for pre-production, for production, for release. And all that you can mention that for release, then exhibition rights are there and then you can go back and explain about the respective companies. Uh, which is, uh, these talkies or these media houses, so that all can be explained. So this is the primary activities, inbound logistics. In the context of R and R, inbound logistics plays a critical role in the company's ability to consistently deliver high quality content. Okay, the company's strategy of prioritizing quality over quantity is reflected in their meticulous approach to inbound logistics. Where careful planning and resource elevations are paramount, efficient management of these resources allows R and R to maintain a. Streamline production process minimizing delays and optimizing cost, which is crucial in an industry where. Time to market can significantly impact a firm's success. If you can recall, the company has itself turned fabulous, I mean, during the year, in terms of the revenue, in terms of the profit. It has significantly increased in comparison to the previous year. It's only the subsidiaries, couple of subsidiaries which are struggling and the companies are struggling with them, but overall company is doing good. Even the EBITDA has also reduced significantly for the overall company. So these resources allow R and R to maintain a streamlined production process, minimizing delays and optimizing cost. Which is crucial in an industry where time to market can significantly impact the firm's success. This robust inbound logistic framework supports the company's over, overarching. Strategy of delivering captivating and innovative content, thereby strengthening its position in the competitive Indian film industry. So this is more or less how company is strategizing its operations and how will they survive in the current situation that they are going through. With you know, changing in the customer behavior that is happening, there are a lot of, uh, people who are moving to the O T T kind of a background. Then we will talk about the operations, R and R has a strong presence in the movie production and exhibition. Largely due to its ownership of Sangam Theaters and Mangala Talkies. Sangam Theater, a successful acquisition, has been modernized to improve profitability while Mangala Talkies handles logistic operations for movie exhibitions. Outbound logistics, so they are actually kind of, uh, contacting various media houses. And then booking those slots which will be required for release of movie, so that is all outbound logistic. The vertical integration of these operations ensure smooth transitions from production to exhibition, enhancing the company's control. Over its value chain, so it is like, it's not only the, when I told you about. When you will cover this as a four step model and then in the release kind of a stage, you can mention all this. That they have this Mangala and Sang- Sangam Talkies with them, which can be a part of their strategies, controlling the supply chain, controlling the, the media houses. Outbound logistics, R and R's outbound logistics are crucial, particularly in the distribution of the movie. So it is not only they are producing the movies, but releasing it and distributing it to the network is also important. So they have this outbound logistics whereby two companies are already there, acquired by them. A key player in this process is Mangala Talkies, which manages the distribution logistics and ensures that movies are released on time and in an efficient manner. The company's integration across different stages of the value chain has significantly enhanced its ability to overseas. And manage the contribution, distribution process effectively. However, despite the strong performance of Sangam Theaters, the decline in Mangala Talkies market share indicates a need for the company to reassess its. Distribution strategies, that's what I told you, that you can mention that the way the Mangala Talkies is actually operating in the, uh, market. You can definite judgment about the going concern, uh, for the Mangala Talkies as well, okay? Reassess its distribution strategies, this reassessment is vital, not only for maintaining its current market coverage, but also for expanding it is in the. Increasingly competitive landscape and then the rise of O T T and you can mention about the Vijay, uh, the media house which. You know, like is there to, uh, through which they have launched their O T T platform. So the rise of O T T platforms further complicates the situation. Posing a substantial challenge to traditional movie exhibition operations to maintain relevance and effectively compete with the online platforms. It is crucial for the company to modernize its theater and integrate digital technology into its operations. The modernization will ensure that R and R remains competitive in a rapidly evolving industry. Now how the company is targeting the marketing and sales, how they would like to stay in the game? So R and R has built a strong brand in the Indian film industry. Particularly through its focus on quality content and diversification into regional and niche markets. The company's strategic positioning in the movie exhibition space allows it to leverage. Its brand for both mainstream and niche content, the company's ventures into niche markets through Vijay. Screen demonstrates an effort to cater to diverse audience preferences, however, with the growing influence of O T T platform, the company needs to enhance its market strategies. Possibly integrating digital marketing and partnership with online platform to reach broader audience, I mean, this is really a good point. That it's not only starting a O T T because you know, like creating, that's what I always say. Uh, that building an application is the easiest thing anyone can ever do, right? But promoting that O T T or promoting that application and then getting the users' footfall on that particular application is the most difficult thing. So it is always advised when there are giant, the mammoths are already existing in that particular kind of a market. It is generally advised not to kind of launch your own application and then probably. Uh, try to get the footprint over that application, it's better to kind of partner with any of these houses and then probably release your movies or. Uh, the media content using these O T T platforms which are already successful over there. And this is, most of the production houses are doing this, so you might have witnessed that rather than coming up with their own media, uh, kind of an O T T platform. They take advantage of having or leverage on Netflix, Amazon Prime, etcetera, which are already there. For R and R, the after-sales service value chain is a strategic tool that not only enhances customer satisfaction, but also differentiates. The brand in a competitive landscape, so they are saying that the feedback that they are receiving and then they are reverting, actively reverting on that feedback. That is also important, so customer is actually, uh, they are getting this feeling that they are being heard. And that the company is actually taking some action or coming up with some improvements. So this after service is really a kind of a very strategic tool that the company has. So not only enhances customer satisfaction, but also differentiates the brand in a competitive landscape. Maintaining an ongoing dialogue with the customers through personalized communication, whether by email, newsletter or social media interactions. Helps in keeping them connected with the brand, the engagement fosters a loyal customer base that is more likely to return for future screenings. So you have, we all have seen like the, every time the customer is giving a feedback, whether a positive or a negative feedback. The company is interacting with the customer to create that brand value and strategy, which is after sales service. For the customers to come back, the feedbacks from customers like Yushu Cortina. Highlights the critical role that after-sales services plays in the overall value chain at R and R. At Sangam Theaters, the commitment to enhancing the movie going experience from start to finish. Has resulted in positive customer experiences, reinforcing, reinforcing the importance of maintaining high standards. In service quality, convenience and comfort, however, the feedback from Mangala Talkies suggests areas where services can be strengthened. Particularly in addressing service delays and seating, sitting comfort. Days insights underscore the need for continuous improvement in customer engagement, issue resolutions and facility upgrades. I mean, your, your dissatisfied customers, I could say, are the biggest motivation or the. The feedback from these negative customers is the most important thing, because it actually tells you where you need to do value additions or what. Are the areas where the customer experience has to be enhanced, okay? So that is really a kind of a good strategy by the company that they are, uh, listening and replying to the customers' feedbacks and. Staying connected with the customers even after their, uh, sales that happen. By actively responding to customer feedback and making necessary adjustments, R and R can ensure that every visit. Whether to Sangam or Mangala Talkies leaves a lasting positive impression. Ultimately strengthening its positions in the competitive entertainment industry. So at times as a customer, you don't want to kind of raise the concern or you, you know that there are certain things you can, as a company, the company cannot change. Let us suppose for Mangala Talkies, when somebody is dropping a feedback, they in their mind somehow knows that there is a lot. In terms of improvement that is required and it's very difficult for the company to come up with, come up with those improvements. But you know, at times as a customer, you just need a place where you can be heard, you can be listened and you, your opinion is valued. So if company is able to demonstrate. So if company is able to demonstrate that they value customers' feedback, I mean that's a really good strategy. It can give. The company an edge over the competition. Support activities. So for infrastructure, the company's strategic acquisitions and vertical integrations are. Key component of its infrastructure. However, the management must address inefficiencies in regional. Operations and adapt to the changing technologies landscape to sustain growth. Okay, the modernization of Sangam Theater has been successful but similar efforts may be needed across other subsidiaries. Particularly those struggling with operational inefficiencies. While the company has seen revenue growth particularly in regional markets, the higher than expected operating costs suggest a need for better financial management practices. Especially in cost center and resource. This is what we have already discussed in the case study. So I mean this is more or less like a summary on on the company and their strategies and how. They are using those strategies to come out as a leader in the in this media kind of an industry. Okay, so that's basically a summary when where a case study is asking you to write down, you have to come up with a structure. Maybe the notes that you created initially will definitely help you. So human resource management, the success of R N R's operations depends on its ability to attract and retain skilled professionals in movie. Acquisition, production, distribution and exhibition. Investments in training and development is crucial for maintaining high. Operational standards and adapting to industry changes. With challenges in managing operating costs at file movies, there may be a need for improving human resource management practices. To enhance employee efficiency and reduce cost. If you can recall, file file movies was a company where they were. Significantly a problem was there which was the higher operational cost. So they are saying. If we will do the human resource management and come up with best practices, maybe this can be reduced. Technology development, I mean uh this O T T, V R, A Rs, all those things. Companies are ready to integrate new technology into its operations such as digital projectors in theaters and partnering with the O T T platforms is critical for maintaining competitiveness. Investments in R and D for innovative exhibition formats and digital platforms could create additional value. We are also talking talking about procurement here. The process begins with securing top tier scripts and story ideas. So. I mean, I I suggested you, you can write down all those four stages, right? That's also a very beautiful way. To address these kind of questions whereby you know that these are four steps of a. Uh movie creation and the fifth maybe you know like how you are going to publish those movies or. Uh how the movies will be exhibited. So in those cases, if you will come across all those five stages. You will you will be able to connect the companies which are acquired because these companies are acquired for one or. Uh additional step of that process itself. So I mean that's another way to present this case study. So the process begins with securing top tier scripts and sorted ideas which serves as the foundation for the company's productions. Given the company's focus on both fiction and non-fiction is generous. I mean, if you can recall, the company's strategy was to move to the non-fiction more than the fictional. The selection and acquisition of compelling narratives are vital. This includes purchasing rights to intellectual properties. Collaborating with accomplished directors and bringing on board renowned actors. All of which are essential input in the filmmaking process. The company's procurement strategies for acquiring content and technology. Are essential for maintaining quality standards. Developing strong relationships with content producers. And technology suppliers can ensure access to high-quality inputs to competitive prices. The higher operating cost at pile movies highlight the importance of effective procurement strategies in managing expenses and maximizing profitability. Okay, uh okay, so I think I think this is more or less how you will present. It's it's your personal kind of a decision. It's not like. Even though some suggestive answers are there, but obviously you can defer from this particular thing but. Make sure that you are covering all the strategies that are mentioned in the case studies and then you are kind of concluding towards one side. I mean, do you really think the company is on the right track in terms of operations or do you think the area of concerns are there for the company? So when it comes to the conclusions, R N R has established a comprehensive value chain. That integrates multiple stages of the film industry from content acquisition to exhibition. The company's strategic acquisitions and modernization efforts have created value across its primary and support activities. However, challenges in managing operational costs particularly in region, regional markets and adapting to technological shifts. Such as areas for improvement. By enhancing its technology development, human resource management and procurement strategies. Rahul and Raj can strengthen its value chain and sustain its competitive advantage in the evolving entertainment industry. So I hope it is pretty much clear that it is actually a summary of the case study. And the answer required you, basically it requires you to. Uh give your opinion on the strategies that the company has in place and what do you think whether they. They will positively impact the operations of the company or there is something, some areas of improvement that are required. Okay, so it's kind of a summary of the case study itself, okay? Okay, should I move to the seventh uh question? Is it okay for you guys?
Can you do that?
Yeah, I know it was very, very much in detail, but these are just references so you can go through later on as well. For your reference and then probably you can address them accordingly. Now the seventh question is whether the production of the movie Simran. Is at the research or development stage under the relevant in the A S. Explain the accounting treatment for the cost incurred till date with respect to the said movie. So the year has come to an end, right? The Simran, a movie on the woman empowerment. Is actually at a stage uh where the production has not started. Okay, so now the the question is asking whether the production of the movie Simran. That is at a research or development stage under the relevant in the A S or it is not yet there. So explain the accounting treatment. Should we capitalize this? The expenses that we are incurring, because if let us suppose they are at a production stage, we can book an intangible asset. For the expenses that we are incurring and this intangible asset can be amortized against the revenue that the movie will be generating. Okay, but if it is not at a production stage, then it is simply the expenditure will be deducted to P N D. It will be a revenue expenditure. No intangible assets will be recognized. Okay, so let's go back to the Simran probably. Uh let's read the para to understand that where exactly we are. When it comes to Simran as a movie. Yeah, it is here. I hope it's visible now. So new projects and strategical decisions. The movie Simran is currently being conceptualized, okay? Point to be noted. That this is currently being conceptualized. It means this is at an ideation stage. Okay, we have not even started pre-production. I mean, we are just doing Rekey or probably we are just doing the script scouting and all. Where the primary focus is on gathering detailed information and developing a solid foundation from the storyline. The project aims to explore the theme of women empowerment. The objective at this stage is to ensure the story is grounded in accurate, accurate, relevant and engaging content. So they are telling basically that this is if these kind of movies are created, there is a lot on ground that we need to walk. So this will include examining historical contexts, cultural elements, scientific data, other relevant fields to enhance the authenticity. And depth of the narrative. The next steps involve synthesizing the gathered information. Into a coherent storyline, developing character profiles and creating a detailed plot outline. Which is, this all will be a pre-production stage, right? So this is basically at an ideation stage and then they are saying that there is a lot to do to move to the pre-production stage. Creating a detailed plot outline, collaboration with subject matter expert to see if the concept that we are coming up with is okay or not. Will continue to ensure the highest level of accuracy and authenticity in the portrayal of the chosen themes. I mean, I mean this is really important. Okay, so when it comes to this particular section and since you know that this is at an ideation stage. What will be your answer? Do you think the R and D can be capitalized? Do you really think that that is possible? Are they at an R and D stage?
Sir, the thing is that even if the production stage is not reached actually as per this paragraph. So that um as per the India's um thirty-eight intangible assets talk about, one of the developments. How we can definitely, we can start capitalize. Before to the development stage, it has to be expenses, expenses and devoted to the profit and loss segment. I feel it's more to the uh expense as a P and L sir.
Okay, so uh I think you are absolutely right because the point is basically it is not at a development stage right now. And until unless something will be at a development stage, you will never get to know. Then whether the concept will be, I mean metallized in the future, whether the future economic benefits will be available or not. And if you don't have that kind of a surety, then the intangible asset is something that it should not be recognizing in the books. And at the year end, you should be expensing out everything, all expenses related to Simran in the P and L. Okay, since it's a descriptive kind of an answer, I'll still take you to the answer to to show or to tell you that the. The things that we have concluded is more or less correct, okay? So the answer to the seventh one is determination of R and D assumes significance. Or self-generated intangible assets as capitalization of cost are permitted only, right? This is really important. This is only permitted if that is there is a recognition criteria met in in A S thirty-eight. Now what is that recognition criteria, right? So this says that the research is original and planned investigation undertaken with the prospect of gaining new scientific or technical knowledge and understanding. Okay, so the research is original and it is planned. Investigation is undertaken to gain new scientific or technical knowledge and understanding, okay? Whereas the development is the application of research findings or other knowledges to a plan and design. For the production of newer sustainably improved materials, devices, products, processes. So they are saying that the research can be there but application of that research material for development of. Any material, devices, product and processes prior to the commencement of the commercial production or use. This is what can still be. Considered. So they are saying the research is original and it should be planned investigation undertaken with the prospect of gaining new scientific or technical knowledge and understanding. This is the precondition. Now, there is another para in in A S thirty-eight which talks about what you can capitalize as an intangible asset. So it says like no intangible asset arising out of this of an internal project should be recognized. If you are at a research phase, you should not be recognizing it. So when we are talking about an ideation. That's a research stage itself. We are still kind of finalizing that what will be the script, what will be the locations now. This is just an idea that we have right now. Thus, an intangible asset can be recognized only on commencement of the development stage. Where the intangible asset can be identified and the entity can demonstrate that future economic benefits are probable on the asset. So when you move to the production stage, that's the only stage where you can say that the future economic benefits will be available. Because now since you have moved to a production stage, there is a high chance, high probability that the movie will be released. It will be. Completed and it will be released, that the future economic benefits are probable from the asset. Further as per the para fifty-eight of the India S eighteen, an intangible asset arising from development or from the development phase of an. Demonstrate that the asset will generate future economic benefits because development is further advanced than the research phase. So when you have moved from research to development stage, then we can still think about. Having an intangible asset in your books. In a movie production cycle, the ideation phase is likely to be research. That is undertaken with the prospect of understanding the potential market for such movie. Expenses incurred prior to the day to the finalization of the concept should be expensed considering the same as cost in the research phase. This is because in the research phase of a project, it cannot be demonstrated that an intangible asset exists. From which the future economic benefits are probable. I mean, if you will allow to capitalize all the revenue on these kind of research expenditures, there should there will be huge. I mean, impact in the P and L because then your expenses will be out of the P and L because there are a lot of. R and D expenditure that is incurred by all companies, including these media houses and probably if there is a. Company related to some technology, they or maybe pharma, there is a huge, huge expenditure of R and D. And if you allow everything to be capitalized, then the P and L will be done. In the extent case, there is no identification of the key cast and crew for the location. The filming set is also being deliberated and have not been yet finalized. Booking of the lead star cast is pending. Date of shooting has not yet been frozen. Accordingly, so they are saying basically that nothing has happened that can. Uh establish that we have moved to a production stage or a development phase. Accordingly, the production of movie Simran is at the research phase only, thus cost incurred till date cannot be capitalized. And should be expensed out in the statement of profit and loss when it is incurred, okay? I hope uh again, I think with the experience that you guys already have with the. Uh appearing in the exams and all those things, probably so this is a very sophisticated and a dedicated kind of a way to write down the answers. But if you are able to uh con- cover the concept that is being explained. And then you are able to kind of come up with your reasoning, a logical reasoning using the in the A S thirty-eight and even if you're not aware about the. Para exact para or something, I mean that is good, that's good to go. So it's not like that you have to come up with para every time, but I mean I'll definitely press uh uh definitely. Prefer if in case you know the in the A S, at least to that extent, this should be covered in your reasoning, okay? So even though you can write down without that as well, but uh. I mean, to create a positive impression, that's very much indeed needed if you can talk about the. India's references or companies that you can preferences wherever required. Okay, so I think that was also an answer which was pretty much easy to understand. The next question is, so before I can move to the next question, which is seems like last for the case study that we are going through. But in on the seventh question, do we have anything or we can move to the eighth one? I hope it is pretty much clear, right? And I think I did explain that if in case you will create an intangible assets. Asset in the value sheet because uh this movie has moved to let us suppose production stage. So whatever expenses you will be incurring, this will be capitalized in the intangible asset. And if that is happening, then that intangible asset will be amortized. Maybe in proportionate to the revenue of the movie. When you will start getting the movie revenue. The the amount of revenue that you will be kind of incurring or adding, you can uh definitely in in that proportion you can. Uh amortize your gas expenditure as well, this intangible asset as well, sorry. Moving to eighth question, which says like, explain the reason for obtaining independent confirmation. Prescribed under S A five zero five. What alternate procedures should the auditors, Ranveer and Ranveer L L P. Perform if the response of independent confirmations of the three receivers was inadequate? Okay, I think a very important question, even though the first part is already covered, we discussed this in detail. I thought I hope you can recall, right? Explaining the reason for obtaining independence confirmation prescribed under S A five zero five. So we can talk about it, but I'll be more interested in knowing that what can be the alternate procedures that you can as an auditor. You can perform to get the comfort over the numbers. Do remember that it is like one sixty days if I can recall correctly and one sixty-four days kind of an outstanding is there. And then as an auditor, you don't think that the confirmation procedures can also give you some comfort, okay? So you are pretty sure that you will not get the confirmations that you are sending, you will not get the reply of those confirmations. And simultaneously, you have to perform some additional procedures to get a comfort. So the floor is open. I mean, I would be happy to know from your perspective that what can be the alternate procedures that you you may plan in this situation. Anyone?
Yes, sir. Sir, S A five zero five, it's external confirmation, it talks about this. The thing is, uh uh when we unable to get that positive evidence from the. By of external confirmation, but we have the alternate procedures there. The thing is that um when you are looking at the residual balance from. Close to that period, this one month prior, one month later, which is that whether really. Uh there is a receipt is coming or there is a transaction is recorded. All these things we can um check it also. We can go and refer that bank statement. Whether the balance is really flowing or not. So otherwise, if you are unable to get that, uh we we can think about any fraud risk factor is there. In in such a way, we can uh do the alternate procedures, sir.
Okay, so when it comes to alternate procedure. I'll give you a couple of examples. So I I discuss. I'll give you a couple of examples, so I I discussed about N B F C and all and then we discussed that in those kind of situations, it is generally very difficult to get the. Confirmation because the uh the clients are also not that educated or organized in any manner to respond you back. I'll give you an example, a practical example that generally we come across when we do audit of microfinance companies or non-banking finance companies. Probably I would like to listen your opinion on how to handle this kind of a situation. So I'm just putting you in a situation which actually happened, so without taking the company name. But there was a company which was into microfinance, so they used to go to village to village, different. Uh villages and then they used to create the group of ladies which they used to call self-help group, S H G. I hope you have heard this term, this is pretty common in the industry. So these uh these ladies that were part of this S H S Gs, uh S H G self-help group. They were not at times that educated and the loan amount was also pretty smaller, I will say, it's like a very small loan amount. Because it was a microfinance company. So what used to happen, that these uh uh self-help groups that were created by the company, the company used to take their K Y Cs. For everyone in the self-help group and then they used to create a file which was adequately appropriate. But when all the documentation was completed, at the last minute, they generally used to deny for the loan coming up with X Y Z reasons. Now, the point is, the company started creating fake bank accounts on the basis of the K Y Cs that they received from these S S H Gs. And then they started dispersing the loan amount into that bank account, which was subsequently withdrawn by the company officials itself, okay? So now they have a K Y C file, a file is already there with all the K Y Cs complete. On the basis of this K Y C, they created a bank account, so a bank account is also opened on the basis of that. And you see for self-help groups and all, it is like generally people are using uh uh thumb impression and all. Even they are not signing, so that kind of a situation is there. Now the company official used to withdraw the amount and they used to start depositing. Their weekly E M Is, okay, so we used to call them equal weekly email uh installments, which is E W Is rather than E M Ls. So let us suppose they are offering twenty five thousand as a loan to one of the S H G. And five hundred is the weekly installment that this S H G is required to cause in the company's bank account. Now this five hundred rupees is the only the company's official, a P G O or a branch financial, they started depositing it to the company's bank account, okay? So that these these loans, these borrowers, they will not become N P As of the company. So now what is happening, one side, the borrowers' number is increasing and the N P A cases are also not there. The the auditors are not able to verify it, the reason is because they were verifying the files. The all the documentation was already in place, when they were sending the confirmations, the amount at an individual line item was very low. So I'll tell you like if they they offered loan to let us suppose five thousand customers, the average account balance is only twenty thousand, twenty two thousand. So it also depends as an auditor, how many confirmations you will uh probably circulate, right? That's also a very big concern. And if you are doing that, there is a high chances that you will not able to receive all the confirmations or majority of the confirmations will not be. You not be able to uh recall, since these S H Gs, these uh customers are not that organized. Even if they will receive the bank confirmation, they used to rush to the branch. Uh of the company itself, where the branch manager or some officials of the company, they used to confirm the balance on the behalf of these borrowers. So it means the auditors are getting the confirmations as well in majority of the cases. Which are confirmed by the branch with the help of the customer, because customer, they. Uh they are just sitting with the branch and then they are like, you know, what should I do with this confirmation and the branch office officer is kind of helping them. While to circulate this confirmation. So one side, what is what was happening, the number of the customers borrowers was increasing. The E W Is were deposited on time, as an auditor, they were checking the dispersal in the bank account which was there, they were checking the. Deposit of the E W Is in the bank that was there, they were checking the through the files that was there, they were checking. Uh through the confirmations, the confirmations was also there. And on the other side, considering the company was able to make some money on this particular uh amount that was dis- dispersed. The banks are confident, the F I's are confident, they are pouring in more money into company's bank account. Giving them more loan for circulation uh or to disperse to the borrowers. So their balance sheet was becoming heavy day by day, it was growing like anything. And obviously, like any other fraud, one day will definitely be there when everything will will uh will burn down, will be posted. So my question to you guys probably, if you can, you are able to understand the, just explain. If you were the auditor, how would you end up? Uh testing this. Anyone, I mean, I explained the whole situation, that what is going on, right?
Sir, we we will go through the receipt pattern, how that uh subsequent receipt or earlier receipt how is coming. Uh so whether that adequate that you you talk about the E W I, that the weekly weekly installment. We 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 can do some, we look of function or something from the ba- bank statement reconciliation, probably we can carry it out. So that based on that we can very well understand, sir.
But bank reconciliation is already happening, right? The auditors are doing bank reconciliation. The company officials are depositing E W I in the bank, so bank in any case will will meet, uh I mean reconcile. I hope you can understand, right? So company officials, it's a kind of a uh fraud by the management, so they know that the auditors will reconcile the bank account. And then they are depositing the E W I in the bank, so that these kind of situations can be avoided. Right? And we thought that probably we should go for uh, I mean, physical verification, we should meet these customers in person. But the problem was that in a list of five thousand borrowers, how many borrowers you can cover? And even if you are covering, let us suppose twenty, twenty-five, fifty, hundred of the uh borrowers. You it it will only be like point five percent or one percent of the total account receivable, which will not give you any kind of comfort. Right? I hope you can, you you can understand the situation and this is a practical situation which happened on one of the client.
And and also we can, how uh however that promoter and all these things group know, how the people are talking outside. From the third party also, we can, how the brand name and character six and the uh.
So that we did, obviously, the background check was the first step before selecting the client, right? But I'm just trying to tell you that, that's why uh there are some limitations when it comes to audit. There are always some limitations as an auditor and that's why it is being said that you are a watchdog, not a bloodhound, right? Because irrespective of how how much efforts you will put, there are always some limitations. Theater because of which the frauds can remain undetected. Okay, so we need to, I mean, to perform the procedures to an extent whereby our comfort is there. And if we are not able to get comfort after X Y Z procedures, then we should be very much open vocal about the. Situation to the management, we should go back to the management and be like, we are not getting comfort, this is the practical situation, you tell me how we can get a comfort. And then if you are, if if we are collectively not able to get the comfort, probably this is not an area of concern for me. And probably I'll qualify my audit report for this particular line item. I hope you can understand, right? So so this is the same kind of a question. The question is basically that explain the reason for obtaining independent confirmation, which is prescribed under SA five zero five. And what alternate procedures should the auditor, the Ranveer and Ranveer LLP perform? So you rightfully mentioned, so there are a lot of customers and let us suppose uh I. Confirmations, but there was no response from them, it means that uh. Now I have to come back to the alternate procedures, I have to find another way to get the comfort on these balances. The company will say that you wanted to send the confirmations to get the one for uh comfort and you have done that procedure, so. I mean, they are also not in a position to go back to the customers to push them that they should be reverting to the confirmation that you have, right? So the point is, this is a practical situation, so you have to find out some alternate procedures through which you can get the comfort. Uh industry specific, I will say, uh a kind of a uh procedure is known as subsequent receipt testing. That's a very uh well industry established kind of an alternate procedure. So generally what we do, we do subsequent receipt testing. So let us suppose on thirty first of March, there is an outstanding of X Y Z. We send the confirmations, but let us suppose we are not able to get the comfort over this. Now what we can do, as we are not able to get the comfort, the second step that we should be doing is. We will be seeing, let us suppose the March ending is there, but we are already somewhere in June or July, doing the audit of this company. So we can see that from April, which is the subsequent period from our testing period, from April to June, right? How many receipts are already there? So let us suppose hundred rupees was outstanding and we got twenty rupees collected after. Uh the financial year from during the Q one of twenty five, twenty six. It means I can still have some comfort on twenty percent because it was subsequently collected. Now the problem is that eighty percent of the amount is still outstanding and I'm not able to get the comfort. So I have done subsequent receipt testing as well, which is the alternate testing, now what should I do? I am sending reminders as well, so I have sent second reminder, I have sent third reminder, but nothing is turning up. And then we take banks as very kind of a serious situation, so if we will not get banks confirmation revert. We will not sign the audit report, so banks is mandatory for us, right? We have to have every bank account's balance confirmed by the banks directly. At times, if we are not getting those confirmations, we send our resources directly along with the authorized person from the client to the bank. Directly to get the confirmation, that's also what we do. But we generally don't go ahead and sign the audit report if there is anything missing in the bank as a confirmation. But when it comes to debtor, there can be a possibility that we are not able to get hundred percent of the response against the confirmation that we circulated. So in that case, the first alternate procedure is your, that is your subsequent cash receipts. So let us suppose we are able to get some comfort over subsequent receipts, let us suppose twenty percent in the example that I have given. The eighty percent of the comfort, I need to find some all other alternate procedures, which can be doing T O D. And test of details, so the outstanding invoices which are there, I can select those invoices, the highest, the the kind of, the top invoices. From the outstanding amount and then I can check the underlying underlying documents. I can definitely see that what is going on, underlying documentation, how are they? Okay, and then I I will try to cover up all the major invoices which are adding up to this account receivable balance. Doing all those matches that I need to do, establishing that the sale or the revenue recognition was correct. All those things is something that I'll be doing during the test of details. So after the subsequent receipt testing, the if the amount is left, a significant amount is left, I can decide to have T O D. And then thereafter, I can decide to have analytical as well at times. Like if the company is saying one sixty four days, I can definitely see that how this is happening, one sixty, one sixty four days. And how things are moving in that that direction, so I can prepare some analyticals, right? The total sales and what will be the sale of one sixty uh days and that this should be the amount which is, which should must be reflecting in the balance sheet. I mean, that kind of analytical uh review can also be there to whatever extent you think. But even let us suppose when while doing the test of uh details or analytical reviews after subsequent receipt testing. You are not able to get the comfort, then it's a serious point that you need to discuss with the management. And if you are after having a management discussion and the all the procedures that you have performed, you are not able to get the comfort over it. Probably you should qualify it, right? You should you should restrain yourself from uh. Giving any opinion on that particular line item, F S L I. So that's how you should be performing the alternate procedures, we'll quickly go through what is written in this particular solution, so. If we go to the eighth, the answer of the eighth question, it says. External confirmation procedures are an effective and efficient way to obtain audit evidence. About financial statement assertions such as trade receivables with number of days outstanding, being significantly higher than industry average, okay? So let us suppose for media industry, the average outstanding is, let us suppose, hundred days, but for our client, it is one sixty days. So even though they have improved from last year, but it is still higher than the industry average. External confirmations also help auditor obtain audit evidence from third parties. With a high level of reliability when responding to significant interest, okay? This actually gives us an additional comfort. Decision whether to use external confirmation procedures requires significant judgment. As as envisaged in SA five zero five, including the objectivity of the confirming party and the willingness of the confirming party to respond. Okay, so that's very important, that it's a significant judgment that will be involved. At times, as as and as an auditor, you need to kind of decide that what is the percentage. Of the total outstanding that you want to circulate confirmations against. You just can't circulate the hundred percent outstanding confirmations, you can't say I have two hundred. Uh receivables or parties from whom the amount is due, so I'll be sending two hundred confirmations. So the first thing is basically you need to see what is the total outstanding, what is your materiality on the basis of you. On the basis of this information, you'll be calculating a multiplier, I mean, how how or in terms of multiplication, how much. Uh volume this receivable is having in terms of in comparison to the materiality. On the basis of that multiplier, you will end up deciding how many samples you will be sending or the amount that you will be covering, okay? Now, the total number of samples once you have finalized, then you have to wind come up with a. Uh I will say a non uh biased method to select that out of. These two hundred, let us suppose, account receivables who are outstanding. And you have finally decided that forty confirmations is what you will be circulating depending on the materiality and the multiplier. Now you have to decide that what will be these forty out of these two hundred, which one these forty will be, right? So for that, you have to come up with an unbiased method, it can be a random selection, it can be a uh probably an M M U selection. If you have heard about this monetary unitary unit sampling, so there are multiple ways to select that number of. Uh which one samples will be circulating the confirmation against, okay? So it's a very significant judgment, so maybe one auditor can decide that I'll be covering twenty five percent. The other may come back and say, I'll decide or I will cover thirty percent, somebody may come up and say fifty percent is what I would like to cover. And then let us suppose fifty percent or thirty percent, twenty percent, there is a gap in uh from a perspective of the auditor because the judgment is different. They might also come back to say that when I will be covering this twenty percent. Uh these are the number of parties that are, or these are the parties which I'm going to circulate confirmation against. So when you will talk to another auditor, they might select a different sample, okay? So that's a very highly judgmental area. But whatever the way you have calculated the numbers of samples or the final samples you have decided. This is uh, this should be a part of your documentation file, it should be a part of your documentation, which you will be doing in the audit file. Okay, that what what is the method that he does to finally select the samples? Decision whether to use external confirmation procedures requires significant judgment. As envisaged in the SA five zero five, including the objectivity of the confirming party and the willingness of the confirming party to respond. I mean, one thing, one another very important thing that you need to understand. At times you may decide that instead of sending physical confirmations, you may send email confirmations as well. So let us suppose especially in the cases of receivables and all, you may write to them, okay? Over through using your email, keeping your partners, like they should be in loop and uh writing down to to that customer, keeping the. Clients authorized personals also in loop so that they can revert directly to us. But if you are doing that, I mean, the industry practice says that you have to kind of be very careful. When you are doing this because you have to get the I Ds that you are using email I Ds validated by your I T department as well. That the I Ds that you are using when you are sending the confirmation, they are genuine I Ds of the customer. For which the confirmation is being sought. There is a high probability that the I Ds are manipulated and you will end up sending the confirmation on those I Ds and you will get a positive confirmation and you will get the reply. So, I mean, confirmation procedure is not a simple kind of a step, it involves a lot of. It's a very, I will say, significant step when it comes to getting comfort. And that's why there are a lot of procedures that are involved when you will do this kind of an exercise. So the auditor should exercise an appropriate level of professional skepticism throughout the confirmation process, which includes the. Uh percentage of the amount that you you are going to cover, the number of samples that you are going to circulate against. The method of selection of the samples, this all is your professional skepticism. Professional skepticism is important in designing the confirmation request, performing the confirmation procedures and evaluating the results of the confirmation procedures. When the auditor do not receive replies to positive confirmation request, the auditor is required under SA five zero five. Apply alternate procedures to the non-responses to obtain the evidence necessary to reduce audit risk to an acceptably low level. The nature of alternate procedures to be performed varies according to the account and the assertion, okay? So whether this is a legal confirmation or a bank confirmation, is it a? Okay, so whether this is a legal confirmation or a bank confirmation, is it a receivable confirmation? Is it an intercompany reconciliation? Is it an employee advance confirmation? I mean, there can be multiple confirmations that you will be sending as an auditor. So depending upon what is the account and what is the assertion, your professional skepticism will play a vital role. And then the professional judgment is something you will use to finalize the number and the exact samples that you will be selecting. Alternate procedures related to the confirmation of the trade receivables may include. So what can be that? Examination of subsequent cash receipts, which we discussed, right? So subsequent cash receipts is is a very profound and I will say as a priority, this is another very important method. Or other entity documentation to provide evidence for the existence assertion. The auditor should evaluate the combined evidence provided by the confirmations and the alternative procedure. What I told, so let us suppose you got the twenty percent confirmations back, right? The eighty percent is still pending. So out of that eighty percent, you will move back to the subsequent cash receipts. And let us suppose out of that eighty percent, twenty-five percent of the cash receipt is there subsequent. So you are now left out with how much? I mean, maybe fifty-five percent of the confirmations that you have not got a comfort around. So for that fifty-five, you have to extend your alternate procedures. The auditor should evaluate the combined evidences provided by the confirmation and the alternate procedures. Both of them should be combinedly taken into care. Perform to determine whether it is sufficient to achieve our audit objectives and if it is relevant and reliable. If the combined evidence provided by the confirmations, alternate procedures and other procedures is not sufficient. Let us suppose you are still not comfortable with the account balance outstanding, subsequent receipts are not that much. Or probably the confirmation receipt is also not impressive. Then what you you can do, the auditor should request additional confirmations or perform other tests. So I'm saying it may be the confirmation reminder, one reminder, two, that's what we do. We send to three reminders as well at times. Additional confirmations or perform other tests such as test of detail. I gave you an example of test of detail, whereby I mentioned that you may decide that for an customer. You may decide to test some significant invoices which are outstanding in their account. So you may ask relevant information, evidences from the management. Uh in relation to the invoices which are outstanding for a particular customer. Because you are not able to get the subsequent receipts or probably confirmation from them. Or you can perform analytical procedures to get an additional kind of benefit. They can involve analytical procedures that I told you. Uh like one of the example was total sales and one sixty days is outstanding. So you can do an overall kind of comfort. Uh you can also do some some level, client level kind of confirmation as well. Let us suppose for a client. Uh for a client, we have thirty days of outstanding. That's the policy that we have for that client. So we can definitely do an analytical that how much sales, month-wise sales has happened and then the last thirty days of sales is something that should be maximum. Uh uh kind of pending or receivable should be in the books. That's another analytical procedure that you can perform at a client level, at a at a long receivable level as well. So even you can perform it at an F S L I level, which is the A R level, or you can leisure level or you can. Uh do this analytical at a sub-leisure level as well. To the extent needed to obtain the desired audit evidence. But if all this, you are not able to get a comfort on the number. I mean, as an auditor, you are required to take a difficult step, right? You're not supposed to convince yourself with the inappropriate evidences that are there. Okay, so then this is a mid, this this is an area of concern and then you can highlight to management that you have to kind of qualify the report. Okay, so so I think I I covered this confirmation part pretty much in detail. And I hope it gave you some some insights on what are we doing practically in the industry. Was it helpful? I mean, I would definitely like to listen from you guys.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's really helpful, sir. It's looked like we revised the under under five zero five in our last week. And in all the questions, no, you you explained in such a way that in detailed way, it's really, it's looked like about to four to five years. We revised and the indices also, it looked like indices thirty-eight. That research-based government phase, when to recognition, when to expenses, it's amazing, sir. You explained, it's looked like it's a total company law and auditing and. In the for all in there revised, in including income tax, income tax also, that revelation.
So I B S, the purpose of I B S is actually to get the concepts from different subjects and then integrate integrate them together. And I'm really happy, I mean, at times I feel jealous from you guys because this I B S was not there when I was pursuing consultancy. Right? This is such an important subject and we have to actually learn the practical implication of various subjects practically. Uh while we entered into the consultancy phase or probably I'll say started handling clients to that level. But this is actually a very good step from I C I that they have come up with this I P I B S. And I'm really happy and thanks a lot to you. You have been throughout very active. Uh when you are presenting something over Zoom and then uh. I mean, you don't know how many people are watching you or how many people are making a note or kind of. Uh are there whether they are active, they are inactive, they are sleeping or what is happening on. Uh if somebody is active, actually it gives some positive energy to the presenter as well. And I'll be very honest, I would have not explained things in this much of detail. If you wouldn't have been there asking relevant questions and showing that interest. So thanks a lot to you as well.
Okay, thanks, sir. I I feel that even though you have not studied in I B S, that's your stage. But now we 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 have such a wonderful person like you, Amit. See, Amit, you explained in the practical world as well as that I B S also in the detailed way. Which will really help me to uh write the exam in very well, man, sir. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks a lot. So Ajit, over to you. We are done for this case study for today. Uh now if you want to, I mean, close it that at your end or probably how to close this because this is the first time I'm presenting something on this I B S platform. So over to you, Ajit.
Okay, sir, okay. Uh Asonji?